Hey, uh. Good evening, everyone. Seven o'clock and we'll go ahead and call the San Bruno City Council meeting for September the fourteenth, twenty twenty one to order. And may I ask for a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Mason?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar? Councilmember Salazar, let me see if he's in our room. He is here, it'll just be one moment.
Thank you. Uh, sorry, um, here.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
And Mayor Rico Medina?
Uh, here. Um, if you can also make me a co-host, please. And, um, now I would be, uh, would appreciate and thankful that, uh, councilmember Hamilton this evening will be leading us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councilmember Hamilton, appreciate it. Um, item number three, public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals will be allowed up to three minutes. It is council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant, uh, to state law. At this time, if there are members of the public that wish to speak on items not on the agenda, if you'd be so kind as to raise your hand, then we will call a line. Not seeing any hands raised and of course, always, uh, anybody else see them? Okay, not seen any, so we will move on. To next, which is announcements and presentations. First item, A, receive COVID nineteen update from Kaiser Permanente, um, from our facility in South San Francisco. And we have, um, our speaker, who obviously is, uh, from the South San Francisco, um, uh, medical center and doctor. I will turn it over to you.
Great, hi, this is John Scare, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, and I wish you could see me. Um, I apologize, somehow my camera is not working. Um. But, uh, we, we will proceed. Uh, so, uh, first, I want to thank you all, uh, for, for inviting me to, to give an update, uh, on, on COVID. Um, it's a, it's a testament to the changing fortunes of this pandemic that, um, when I was first invited back in July to give, uh, an update, it was about, uh, potentially with a focus on how we could travel safely in, in the vaccination era. Um, and, uh, of course, this summer has gone a little differently from, uh, what most people anticipated. Um, the, uh, the, the, the Delta variant, uh, had its own, own mind about what was going to happen. And so, this has been a challenging, uh, summer, uh, for everyone, uh, including those of us in healthcare. Um, uh, but what I'd like to present as, as an update is, uh, I, I come to you with a, with a message of gratitude and hope, actually. Um, yes, we are tired, uh, this has been a difficult summer, um, but I think there's a lot to be thankful for, uh, and a lot to look forward to. Um, uh, first is because, uh, while we, we are in our fourth surge, uh, there are, are strong indications that we are coming to the end of our fourth surge, uh, in, in the Bay Area, uh, and in particular in San Mateo County. Um, uh, and the reason why I'm so grateful is because, uh, despite the challenges of the last few months, uh, in the last eighteen months of the, of the pandemic, uh, uh, we have come through this fourth surge, uh, probably better than most areas of the rest of the country, uh, and that is thanks to all of you. Um, uh, i- if you've been paying attention, I assume you have, uh, to the San Mateo, uh, uh, Department of Public Health website, you will see that over ninety percent of, uh, the population in San Mateo County has had at least one, uh, uh, dose of a vaccine. Um, and that has made all the difference, uh, in this particular surge. Um, uh, I'm proud that Kaiser Permanente has, has played a, a large role in, in distributing that vaccine. Uh, we've distributed more vaccine than, than anyone else in the county, um, uh, between South San Francisco and Redwood City. Um, I would also say in the next breath that it has taken a village, uh, to get that done. Uh, over two hundred organizations, uh, in San Mateo have distributed vaccine, uh, since the start of, uh, our efforts, uh, back in December. Um, and as a result, uh, we have weathered this surge, uh, probably better than anywhere else, uh, I would say, maybe even in the country. Okay? Um, and I think we're pointing the way towards, uh, where we can go in the future. Um, because while we are obviously, uh, uh, come into grips with the fact that we might not have COVID behind us, uh, and we might be living, uh, with COVID for a while, um, I think the Bay Area and San Mateo County and Northern San Mateo, uh, present an example of how we can successfully, uh, live with COVID. Um, uh, all that good news a- aside, uh, what I would say is we still have our challenges, uh, with vaccines. Uh, while again, over ninety percent of the population over the age of twelve has had a vaccine, um, we still have, uh, the kids under age twelve, uh, who are still yet to be vaccinated. And in some of our more vulnerable groups, uh, particularly, uh, black and, and Latinx populations, uh, the uptake of vaccine has not been, uh, as high as we would like. Um, again, uh, we have been doing huge efforts, uh, both within KP and throughout the community, uh, to try to provide, uh, uh, education for folks, uh, reassurance for folks, um, and trying to meet folks where they are. Um, and that effort continues and we slowly continue to make progress, uh, but we're not done. Um, if it was just vaccines, uh, that might be enough, but in fact, I think our community has, has been, uh, on board with many of the other measures, uh, that were asked folks to do as well, um, uh, including masking, uh, indoors, uh, including, uh, uh, keeping activities outdoors when we can, uh, in, including, um, uh, avoiding, uh, large gatherings indoors, um, and, and trying to find, uh, better ventilated, uh, spots when we do need to meet indoors. Um, so, uh, we still have a lot of uncertainty, uh, going forward. Um, uh, we don't know what's going to happen, uh, with kids going back to school, uh, whether that may precipitate, uh, um, more transmission. Uh, uh, we don't know what's going to happen with the flu season. Um, we are also struggling with, uh, the deferred care, uh, that's been put off, uh, as a result of the pandemic. Um, and, uh, we're also addressing the idea of, of the, as we learn more about COVID, uh, our messages to the public continually change. And I would ask your, um, and beg your patience, uh, that those messages will continue to change, uh, uh, and please bear with us. Um, but all that said, um, uh, I'm incredibly grateful that I live in the community that I do, uh, because of the trust, uh, that we have in our leaders, our, our political leaders, uh, the trust we have in our medical system and the trust we have in each other. Uh, because I think as a result of that, uh, we are doing much better, uh, than, than in, um, many other areas of the country where, uh, this latest surge really has reached, uh, crisis proportions. Um, and I think we are pointing the way, uh, to where the rest of the country can go. Um, uh, I, they had the one slide and I, what I just want to emphasize is, uh, uh, yes, we are still offering vaccination, uh, on a daily basis in, in Kaiser Permanente in South San Francisco and Redwood City. Um, yes, we are still doing, uh, uh, testing every day, uh, and we are preparing, uh, for our flu vaccination efforts to start on September twentieth. Um, so, uh, while we still face uncertainty, um, again, I think we have a lot to be grateful for and a lot to be hopeful about. Um, I tried to keep it brief and so I imagine there are other questions, so I would, uh, gladly take them now.
Uh, Doctor, thank you, uh, for your updating your, your, uh, comments. Is there any, uh, questions from my colleagues? Not seeing any questions at this time, um, from folks. Uh, Doctor, we do want to thank you for your time. Um, thank you in, to Kaiser. When I see some of the reports, I see that Kaiser has really, uh, been a leader when it comes to getting the vaccinations out and assisting and, and the community. So, uh, thank you to you, uh, all the staff and those that are on the front lines. Uh, our council and community are appreciative of what you have been doing and what you are continuing to do for, uh, for all of us. So, thank you.
Great, thank you.
With that, we will move on to item B, receive presentation and annual report from the Community Preparedness Committee. And I believe we will be going to, um, conference room one fifteen. And I believe we have our chair that will be giving our report. City Hall?
Okay, good evening, everyone. Uh, nice to see you all, I'm going to give the report, uh, twenty twenty. Uh, next one, please. Yeah, uh, we are an all-volunteer group, as you know, and we promote emergency preparedness planning and education for residents of San Bruno to mitigate the potential, potential consequences of natural and natural disasters. But in twenty twenty, our members were as shown, Malcolm was the chair, I was vice chair, Dirk the coach, Rob the headist, and we picked up a new member in twenty twenty, Sedan Millie. City Council liaison was Michael Salazar. Okay. Uh, and then just throwing this in here, we, our members are the same for twenty twenty one. And we, uh, our liaison from the city council is now Linda Mason. Uh, our, uh, city staff is Ari Dela, the fire chief, Gage Slice, the Italian fire chief, Scott Rogie, police officer. And our ex-official members are Walt Long, the San Bruno Amateur Radio Club, and Doug Kuns, who represents the Red Cross. Uh, we, excuse me, we put these in so I could show you what we normally do in a non-pandemic year. We go to all sorts of functions, community day at the park, police day at Tanforan, fire station of the house, and all of those different places. We have a table with all kinds of good FEMA information. We have SERP information and we even have assignment sheet, um, for people that are interested in taking the SERP classes. And then we pass that information over to the fire department. And we, um, at the, uh, fire station of the house, we had a table there handing out some of the same information. In addition to that, we have, we had, uh, something called a go-bag, which is the, uh, emergency kit you grab when you've got five minutes to evacuate your house. And we, uh, we had samples of the kits there. Uh, the kits can be commercially, uh, bought or you can make your own. I prefer to make my own and tailor it to my own needs. Well, post-COVID events, you can see it's a very short list. We still have our monthly meetings, but now they are Zoom. There were no public safety events held in twenty twenty and none are planned for twenty twenty one. We were hoping for the, uh, the Parapet Day at San Mateo Event Center, but that's been canceled. So what we can do is have, uh, monthly PSA topic, topics, um, and to put on the fire department website and channel one, that shows on there too. And we, that's available at ready.gov slash calendar. There's different topics for every calendar month and it changes, you know, fire safety, uh, all sorts of different things. So that, that's what we've devoted to doing. Okay. Uh, the only city funds that we have are the use of a copier, which the fire department is graciously, so we can hand out fires and so forth. We are all, indeed, volunteers. We have lots of materials from OES, Sheriff's Department and FEMA. FEMA has a lot of good information out. And then, uh, we have, uh, samples of go-bags. And in every SERP class, we, our radio club would come and give a short talk about, uh, the value of a, of ham radio for emergency communications. Next slide. Uh, there were no in-person or Zoom SERP classes in twenty and twenty twenty, twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, so we have not done any, uh, radio training. Disappointing. Okay. One of the, um, uh, groups affiliated with our, uh, club, our committee, is the San Bruno Amateur Radio Club. And this club has been more active or as active now during COVID as it was pre-COVID, because if you're talking on a radio, everybody's in their house and they're talking on a radio. You can't get more socially distanced than that. So we don't need, we don't need to meet in person. We do have monthly, a Zoom meeting now, which we had last night. Um, and we covered various subjects. Nice thing about, um, the amateur radio code, it's, it's set up primarily for emergency communications when there is no power, no internet, no cell service. Uh, amateur radio can always get through. And our, most of our members have, uh, stationed in their homes and we all have mobile equipment as well. So we, we don't have to stay in our homes. We can travel all over the, all over the city of San Bruno and still get out emergency, uh, communications. In fact, um, let's see, we have a weekly net and the net is just like a, a get-together on the radio. And we have, every net is primarily an emergency drill. We operate in three different frequencies. If the first two frequencies that are repeaters, if they're down and not operating, we can operate simplex, which is basically radio to radio, line of sight. We go all around the city of San Bruno, which, as you know, is full of gullies and cans and so forth. It can be hard to get your radio signal through. So we have mapped out citywide the good places that will give you the best communications, uh, the best radio propagation in the city. So, uh, let's see. Okay. Let's picture some of the things we did, uh, pre-COVID. Uh, the one on the lower right was, um, Kevin Mullins' health and safety fair at Tanforan, which was canceled this year. But as you can see, we had a table, we've got SERP information, we've got, um, SMC alert information, lots of, uh, emergency preparedness information that FEMA is really good about, uh, printing up. All sorts of things and we, as people go by, we reach out and say, are you prepared for an emergency? Are you, are you ready for the earthquake and so forth? And we get them engaged, conversation and, uh, leaflets to them and try to get them to sign up for a SERP class. Unfortunately, when I do that. And here's some of the things that we're telling, and, and as far as SMC alert goes, um, a lot of people around town are still not signed up for this and have no knowledge of it. So, as I'm standing in line at Lucky's, I'm talking to the checker and I said, have you ever heard SMC alert? And, uh, he said, no, what is that? And I go, it's, first, my first thing out of my mouth is, it's a free thing, no cost, sign up and you get the emergency, uh, notifications of fires, uh, explosions, road closures, water for breaks, water main breaks, all sorts and active shooters, all the sorts of things that you need to know before you set out in your car, so. Anyway, uh, the go-bag is one of my favorite, um, favorite things, because if you only have five minutes to leave your house and get out before the fire hits you, you have to have that go-bag packed, um, with things that you're going to need for at least a week. So this is a list, um, batteries. And, and another thing that people don't always think about is all the documents that you have that are very important. Um, your auto registration, your auto insurance, your homeowner's insurance. I'll bet nobody knows all sixteen digits of their credit card. I, I never did, so, uh, you can make copies of that either on a flash drive or make them, uh, paper copies and have all of that in your go-bag ready to go, so good. And also, um, if the power's out, the ATM will not be working, so you should have a small supply, a spot, excuse me, a supply of small bills so that you can buy things. Uh, always keep your gas tank in your car, never let it go below half a tank, keep it always filled, because if the power goes out, the gas stations are not working either, so. Just the two things to be, uh, to be cognizant of. Uh, and knowing where nearby AEGs are located is good because we went, uh, those of you that are, are trained to, to use those, it's, it's good to know where they are and most public buildings have those. And I also like to, to mention that three of the members of our committee are amateur radio operators, as well as the club, and we are also SERP qualified. So we try to, we take great pride in that. So, that's it, any questions?
I do see we have a, a member of the public that has their hand up. If they could be brought in, um, that's okay with council, bring that in first and then I'll turn it to the council, we'll go to the vice mayor. Please.
Greg Glassner, and you should be able to unmute. Are you good, Greg?
So I, I just wanted to reiterate something she said. Ham radio is a very old technology. Um, when I was growing up, when I was like a pre-teen, our neighbor was a ham operator. But ham radio is very, very important when we have the next major emergency, which we will. Well, it'll be an earthquake, it'll be flooding, whatever it will be. Um, but I, 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 I think sometimes people look at ham as kind of this old obsolete technology. Um, but it, it's really, really important and I support them a lot. And although I don't have a license, I am a member of the club.
Yes, I recognize your voice. You've been to some of our meetings, good to see you on tonight. Yeah, as far as, uh, several years ago, when some of the really bad fires were going on up in the North Bay, um, excuse me, no cell towers, uh, some of the towers had actually burned down. There was no internet, there was no telephone, there was no communications, period, at all. And the only communication there was, was mobile amateur radio, uh, radios. And like I said, most of our members have mobile capability. We have an antenna that, an antenna that climbs on the top of our car. Go anywhere and you can still provide emergency communication. So it's very important, that's why we, in every SERP, uh, class, in every SERP course, we pick a class and, uh, give a little spiel about the importance of ham radio. It's much easier to get a license now than it ever was, you're not required to learn Morse code. So a lot of people find that very helpful.
Thank you for your comments, uh, the, uh, next person, please.
Next is Dave Dornlist, Dave, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hey, good evening, uh, Dave Dornlist, KN six KOO, a member of the ham club. Um, I, I've been watching, uh, attending the, uh, the committee's meetings and I have to say that I think Janet, in her leadership, is doing a very good job with the support of the police department and the fire department. Um, I, 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 I commend them for doing a good job. I think it's tough with the limited resources they have. And one of the things that I know it's a topic to them and I think I'm going to bring it up because they might not. And that's their ability to, to deal with social media. Apparently, there are restrictions that would help them get out to the community. And the community, gain out to the community is a very important situation. Um, it's good to be on the fire website. Um, because we're the ham club, we can do what we want, basically. For instance, we had a meeting, I'll give credit to Janet last night, we did it on go-bags. And I was able to publicize it on Nextdoor and in a way that we wanted to get it done. We got seventeen people there, um, not a huge crowd, but it's a little bit of reach, I don't know how they do it. But Janet, that's one of her favorite topics and she led the discussion. And it's a shame not m- more people saw it. Another meeting we had, uh, we actually had forty-six people attended. Um, we had another program that I'm involved with and have been speaking to your fire chief about, and that's Arden, uh, which is a, we, we call it the disaster internet. It's a, it's a radio frequency, uh, communication system that we're trying to push into San Mateo County and then connect up to the EOCs. We think it's very important, we're all, it's, it's an amateur, uh, movement, but we think it's important to them. Um, we had forty-six people at that meeting and, um, the head of the, the group, Greg Allerback, um, we posted his speech, four hundred and sixty people have listened to it. I would urge all of you maybe to listen to it, because it's something that we want to do as a public service. But once, last thing I want to mention, once again, is Janet and the committee do a very nice job and they should commend it for their work.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Dornlist, um, for that information, appreciate it. Seeing no other hands from the public, we'll turn it to council for, uh, questions or comments, Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, um, thank you for the presentation and all the work that, uh, your, your, uh, you all do. Um, I have a que- a couple of questions. Um, the first one being is, have, have you seen an increase in the attendance of your meetings? Being that they are now, or they have been on for a while on Zoom? I, I recall, uh, as a liaison, we rarely got people to come to these meetings. Um, my second question is, do we have any updated, uh, data on SMC alert? What percentage of our residents are, uh, enrolled?
Um, can, we can turn that over to the chair or, uh, fire department staff, whichever is best. But first one was, uh, the attendance, are we seeing a, uh, an increase from our pre-COVID to today?
Um, we are for our meetings, yes, because it's available by Zoom and I think people are more apt to tune in on Zoom than they are to actually, because we used to hold them in the basement of the EOC. So I think just a few more people are, of course, there's a lot of people that have more to worry about right now than our meetings, unfortunately, they're, they're trying to get work, they're trying to juggle family and, and everything else, so. But I think it is easier for them to, to check into our meetings. As far as SMC alert, you mean this? Yeah, you know, uh, I don't, I don't have any data on the, how many people have actually signed up.
Honorable Mayor, uh, Ari Dela, your fire chief.
Um, please, please, chief.
Sure, we, um, we have been working with, uh, San Bruno PD, uh, and have launched a campaign to increase the participation in SMC alert. And, uh, that just happened a month or so ago, so we'll be looking to get some metrics on that and determine how, how much our, our participation, uh, goes in, uh, up in SMC alert. Um, and just remember, SMC alert is an opt-in system, so that's an important thing to kind of remember for us, is it's an opt-in system. And, uh, we do have other avenues to get information out, but, uh, that is a great one for routine, day-to-day emergencies, if there's any such thing.
Excellent, um, and one, one last comment, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, would be my support, uh, in finding ways to increase the social media, uh, outlets, uh, that, uh, these boards and commissions that could, um, post and, and to provide more information to the public. I, I think, um, I'm in favor of that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from colleagues? Not seen any at this time, uh, councilmember Hamilton.
Very quickly, just want to say thank you to the, uh, to the members of the committee for all the good work that they do, uh, especially through, through COVID and all the difficulties. Um, we, we very much. Especially through, through COVID and all the difficulties, we, we very much appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Janet, Madam Chair, if you would, please convey to the team and all those on it, thank you for the work that they do and the time and obviously it has been daunting and challenging in order to try to still get the word out and be engaged with the community. But I think you folks are doing that and thanks to those that spoke who also are on the radio, who are assisting in that as well. So on behalf of the council, thank you for the time and your efforts and thank you for being here this evening and presenting the update from the Community Preparedness Committee.
Thank you, thank you. I do have one comment to make, a few things are opening, you know, since we can't, we can't sit at the table in various places because everything's closed, a few things are opening up. The senior center, for one, the library is open at a limited scale. And so since we can't visit anybody, really, we've been putting, putting flyers up, a couple, some of these places all over town. SMC Alert flyer is one, and there's a flyer that describes what to have in your go bag. And so we put some up at City Hall, right here, senior center, the rec center at their new location, Shelter Creek, we do it there, and Peninsula Place, we've also put some flyers there. And so even though people can't see it when they come in, the door, they'll see the flyer and hopefully they'll pick it up and get some good information out of it, so that's about the best we can do at this point.
We understand and, and again, appreciate it and thank you for being there this evening. With that, we're going to move on under announcements and presentations. I think it would be appropriate just to go to Dee next with, since with the prior presentation. And that's issuing a proclamation declaring October third through the ninth of 2021 as Fire Prevention Week in the city of San Bruno. There's a lot of wherashes and this and that and, and really, what, what I am going to do is, you know, the traditional now therefore, I Rico, you Medina, Mayor of the city of San Bruno, proclaim Fire Prevention Week, October third through the ninth, which the motto is learn the sounds of fire safety. But more importantly, I think it's an opportunity for us as a community council to really thank all the first responders, the firefighters and our team from the San Bruno Fire who have been dispatched along with many others in this county and other counties, up and down this state. It has been a very challenging year and it seems where you would say this last year, you come into this year and it's even more challenging. So instead of a lot of those, I think I just want to offer thanks and appreciation to our fire department and the staff and what, and what they're doing for the state and, and for us. In the meantime, I'd like to turn it over to our fire chief.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council, Ari Dela, your fire chief. And thank you for the kind words in regards to our first responders. And we wanted to make sure we recognized Fire Prevention Week, October third through the ninth this year. This is NFPA and the Fire Services Signature Fire Prevention Awareness Event. And it's the oldest continuous running U.S. Public Health Observance in, in the nation that was launched in nineteen twenty-two. So it's an important, an important event that's been going on for quite some time. If I can have the next slide, please, oh, you've got it. The theme for this year, every year that NFPA or the National Fire Protection Association has a theme for their Fire Prevention Week. And this year's theme is learn the sound of fire safety. And I'll give you some, if I can have the next slide, please, there's five elements. They want to have the key messages for us for learning the sound of fire safety is when a smoke alarm or carbon monoxide alarm sounds, we want people to respond immediately by exiting their home as quickly as possible. The second bullet point is if your alarm begins to chirp, it may be, mean that the batteries are running low and we need to replace them. And if it continues to chirp after the batteries are replaced, or your alarm is more than ten years old, it's time to replace them. So that's an important component. Thirdly, they want you to test all of our smoke and CO2 alarms monthly and by using that test button to make sure the alarm is working. Fourth is if there's someone in your household who is deaf or hard of hearing, and this is one of the important pieces of that same theme I talked about earlier, install a bed shaker or strobe alarms or lights that can alert a person to a fire. And it's extremely important for someone who is impaired. And lastly, know the difference between the sound of a smoke alarm and a carbon monoxide alarm. The industry standard is for a smoke alarm to beep three times and a carbon monoxide detector to beep four times when they do have those alarms. Next slide here is, this is, it rolls right into this NFPA theme for Fire Prevention Week, rolls right into our sixty-seventh annual San Bruno Fire Department Poster Contest. This is a contest that we've had with Allen School, Bel Air School, the Highland School, John Muir, Portola, Rollingwood and St. Robert's School. This is an annual program that started, if I can get the next slide, in nineteen fifty-four. If you see that on the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see that's an article from the nineteen fifty-four newspaper announcing the winners of our San Bruno Fire Poster Contest. And that was the first annual awards that were ever done. So the flyers and rules and regulations and everything for the poster contest have been distributed to all the schools by Chief Slice in the Fire Prevention Division. And basically, at the end of it, on October third through the ninth, certificates of participation and merit and ribbons will also be presented to the winners of the, winners of the poster contest at the assemblies at the participating schools. I get the next slide? This is just an example of the process we go through when we announce the winners and do the presentation for Fire Prevention Week and the poster contest on an annual basis. And again, October third through the ninth, they will be presenting the awards. If I can get the next slide, please, this is just a quick copy of the web address. If anybody is interested in further information on Fire Prevention Week, www.nfp.org/fpw for Fire Prevention Week. And with that as conclusion, and have any questions for me anymore, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, chief. Are there any questions from the council? Okay, not seeing any, then, chief. And, and I see that Fire Marshal, I believe, Gage is in the room. But to the Fire Marshal, thank you for your work with the Community Preparedness Committee. And then also, chief, thank you for your presentation. Then again, on behalf of the council, our thanks to everybody for all the work that they do and with our strike teams and our thoughts are with all of them when they, when they, when they depart. And then we think about them until they return. So again, thank you. And with that, we will move on to item number C, which is the update on the Recreation Aquatic Center Constructed, City Manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council and members of the public. Javon Grogan, City Manager, and the presentation I have now is just to give the city council and the public a brief update on the development of our beloved Aquatic and Recreation Center. And so the agenda is, to set the objective for tonight, we're going to go over the groundbreaking ceremony where we had an amazing battle with the community. Talk about the communications plan, which the city council asked for a presentation on that, next steps and then questions. So again, want to begin with the general overview of the project. We know that we've talked about it for a lot and there's so much anticipation on our community. But we'll just give a quick summary of what's going to be in this new amazing building. Want to also talk about the regular flow of, of information to the community and the council and the next milestones. So first off, the new facility will be just under fifty thousand square feet. The building components are listed here and I'll run through them really quick. The first is a year-round aquatic center, both an indoor and an outdoor pool with leisure and lap swim, as well as two party rooms, a indoor gymnasium with a track that rings around the top, high school regulation courts that can also be divisible and utilized for other sports. Classrooms for lifelong learning that are also divisible and available for meetings and enrichment. A, a community hall, large gathering space, a, a mental space that also includes a catering kitchen and a, a fitness area for fitness equipment, daily school exercises. In our construction, we had a groundbreaking just a few weeks ago. And so the, the construction fences went up and so September of this year through fall of twenty twenty-three. And so why don't we begin by introducing the team and there, there's a, a few people that I want to introduce to the city council. Two, two of them are here tonight. The first person is who we affectionately call Rod, Rod McCray. He is the city's project manager for the project. He will handle all management responsibilities related to the project from the, from, from the beginning part, beginning in this month and September through the completion. And really serves as the city's primary representative to both the construction manager and the contractor. He will be the primary person providing the city council and the community and our advisory bodies with updates. So Rod is here today, Rod comes to us with a wealth of experience. Last of which he was a principal civil engineer for the city of Mountain View and completed various community-facing projects. And so we're, we're excited to have him on the city's team of our project manager for this development. But construction manager, many members of council have met George Sanin, different structures, but the construction manager really served as a primary liaison to the contractor with the chief responsibility of ensuring that the project is built to the designated standards and importance with all the required permits, plans, specifications and regulatory requirements. George is a, a very key individual of, of the team that is working on behalf of the city with the contractor. And our contractors later construction, they're the general contractor in charge of day-to-day operations and all construction activity and management of subcontracted, often also subcontractors. And Patrick O'Flattery is the project superintendent for later construction who will be supporting this project. Our groundbreaking ceremony, as I mentioned, was, was just a few weeks ago on August twenty-seventh. It was right before the very last concert in the park, an amazing day. All of council was, was there, hundreds of members of, of the community was there and we celebrated turning over dirt in the official launch of this project, such a wonderful day. And really had a number of displays out so the community could both watch videos and a, a fly-through of the building as well as visual displays throughout the park. Beginning this plan that, that the city council asked for. And so we'll, we'll talk about a number of components and then, of course, answer any questions from the city council. And so the construction side will be going up over the next week. It is a four-by-four side, consistent with standard practices and the, and the city council's request. There will be direct contact information on the construction site, phone numbers for all of the three primary individuals, the construction manager, the city's project manager, as well as the superintendent for the construction firm. And we will also have the website, the, the website available on the site for people to get to the website and, and get a host of information. So regular updates, and so there, there'll be a number of public meetings that will receive, will be given to the public in various bodies. So first off, we wanted to talk about the city's plan for regular recurring public monthly updates. And so as the, as the city council knows, there is an advisory committee that has been supporting this project. That advisory committee is really made up of two individuals from the city council, two individuals from the planning commission, two individuals from the Park and Recreation Commission and two individuals from the San Bruno Community Foundation that is providing a fifty mil, a fifty million dollar grant to support the cost of, of this facility. And so that is a eight-person advisory committee and also supported by a host of staff. Those meetings will become public meetings, we will agendize them. They will be streamed on Zoom and, and should we go in person? They will, they, the public will be able to attend in person. The lead presenter will be Rod, our project manager, George Sanin, the construction manager. Key staff will be present as well as we have secured the attendance of the contractor to attend those meetings virtually. And so those meetings will begin in October of twenty twenty-one, so beginning next month. And the target time that, that we picked for these meetings is for these public meetings to occur actually right before our regular public Park and Recreation Commission. And so we are looking at a start time of approximately five-thirty on the third Wednesday of every month. And so we will get, get that information out to the community. And we know that the city council had a desire to have the, have the contractor be available at a public meeting. Our, our recommendation and the communication plan is to have that at the advisory committee meeting where, where if any member of the public does have an issue, they can come to that public meeting and really have a meeting addressed at sort of the lowest level possible versus having that request go directly to the city council meeting. And so those will be, again, public meetings open to the public on a monthly basis every third Wednesday. Next, quarterly project updates to the city council, beginning on a quarterly basis, December, March, June, September. Quarterly updates, and these are presentations, public presentations that, at public meetings at the San Bruno Community Foundation on January, April, July and October. Those will be led by the city's project manager. And then a host of other communications, so a monthly written communication to the city council that will be provided and, and developed by both the project manager and the construction manager, sort of an industry standard practice that both our project manager and construction manager, which will do. Monthly website updates that we will push out on the website to have current information if any member of the public wants to go on, on the website. We are also in the process of, of acquiring a live time-lapse camera feed that will provide real-time images twenty-four seven. And so that, that camera feed will be, will, will arrive here in the next week and, and go up and provide those, those live camera feeds. Responses to the public, and so any member of the public that has a question, again, can contact the project manager and, or they could actually contact the project manager, the construction manager, or a representative from the construction firm. But we've really designated the city's project manager to be the city's point person to ensure that any inquiry from the public receives a timely response. Weekly notices, all, all the required road closure notices or notifications to neighbors will occur on a weekly basis. As we know with construction, there will be times when the, the road network is impacted. This project does include a realignment of the safe parkway. And so as those road closures come up, there will be notifications to neighbors. And regular communications as needed on our website, posts to social media and on Channel One. We're currently in the process of redesigning the, the project website, there is an actual project website. But we are in the process of redesigning that to a more construction-focused website that of course will have links to all the documentation and, and, and presentations that have happened to date. But, but we're refocusing the website to be construction-focused to provide that sort of primary resource of what's happening now to the community. Next step, so during the month of September, what can the public expect? And so the construction fence, as any of you have been over there, is now installed and the, the area is cordoned off. There's mobilization of, of the site occurring, including the, the delivery of construction trailers. There, there are a number of trees that need to be removed, that process will be happening in September. There's a number of abatement efforts that are needed as we prepare for, for demolition and the pre-demolition preparation. And the demolition of the facilities will begin in the latter part of September. The public should not expect Uh, the public should not expect a big wrecking ball. Uh, that only happens in the movies nowadays. Uh, uh, but it, it will be a very, uh, facilitated process, but that will begin toward the end of, of, of September. Uh, and they'll begin sharing up, um, uh, areas on the site, uh, and there's a number of, of hillside work that needs to be done. Uh, and so follow us, uh, of course, on all the, uh, city's social media accounts and, and, uh, uh, our communications team and the project manager, uh, manager will begin to actively push out information, uh, related to this project. Uh, and so with that, that concludes the brief presentation. We know the, we know the council was interested in, uh, the, the various components of the communication plan, and so we wanted to present that to the city council. Thank you.
And thank you for the update and the presentation. If there are comments from the, uh, community or, uh, council members, and if you could, uh, uh, raise your virtual hand now, and we'll start with Councilmember Mason.
I just wanted to, um, thank the city manager for the update. Um, and that, while I appreciate the advisory committee being more accessible to the public, I still do want to reiterate the original request that this be a monthly update provided directly to the council. Um, I think it's really important that we are overseeing what's happening, especially because the expenditures are, um, at this point, potentially going up, given the cost of materials, and that those requests will likely have to come back to us if we're not within the fifty million dollars. Um, in addition to that, we were informed that we would be, uh, informed of all change orders and those may happen on a monthly basis. Um, so while I think it's great and I, I would support the continuation of the advisory committee, um, they've been, you know, meeting for years, I, I do think that it's really important at this point that the updates do come directly from, uh, from the contractor preferably, but to the council. And that, uh, as I stated before, they don't have to be long, uh, but that they do need to be updates. And the other, um, request I did want to make is also that we, and, and I, I just want to make a point about that too, is that if there are issues that come up at advisory committee that may need, um, some kind of an immediate decision or discussion, we'd have to wait to agendize it just to discuss it, uh, much less make any decision. So I, I do just want to stick to the original request of a monthly update to the full council on where we are. And I did want to also ask that we be provided a timeline as soon as possible on the phasing, uh, what, you know, what are the phase, what do the phases look like, um, and what is the timeline within each one of those phases? Um, and I think, let me make sure there's nothing else in my notes. I think that's it. Um, and, uh, the, I think, oh, I see. Okay. Sorry, I had another note here. I also wanted to ask when we'd be presented with the business plan for the rack. Um, I know that we've, I know that one has been presented, but when it would be publicly presented so that the public is aware of what the plan looks like and what the plans are to keep the, um, the rack op- operating. Um, and then lastly, on a, on a note, is just thanking all of the staff who worked on the groundbreaking. It was very well done, um, and the amount of work that probably went into coordinating with so many different individuals that were invited to the event probably was a significant amount of time and work. So thank you to the staff. It was really quite beautiful.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, uh, thank, thank you for that presentation, City Manager Rogan. Um, would, is the email gonna be provided on that bulletin board? Um, sometimes it, it, it's a lot easier to send an email than to call people. Um, so that's my first question. Uh, making sure that we do have a frequent, frequently asked question, um, FAQ on the website, um, so that people could kind of, um, be given what questions that, that are out there. Um, if, if, a quick reminder on what's being salvaged from, from the rec center. Um, and, um, just clarifying on, uh, council, councilwoman Mason's updates. Uh, we are getting those in writing, monthly. And the, the, the presentation to council is quarterly. Wanted to make sure I got that right. And, um, I also support obtaining a copy of the construction schedule. It is my understanding that the, uh, contractor does provide a, uh, a, a construction schedule, um, and it's updated quite frequently. So it'd be great to have that, um, if not, some, some form of that, um, on the website. And of course, the business plan, we do have a document, but we do not have any, um, pricing yet on what these facilities would be operating at. So those are my questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. What I'm gonna do at this time, um, between Councilmember Mason and Vice Mayor Medina, City Manager, there were, uh, a few questions, and so maybe we can address those. Why not certainly give Councilmember Hamilton and then, uh, Councilmember Salazar an opportunity, then we can circle back around with the council again.
Sure, um. Let me begin with, uh, Councilmember Mason's, uh, questions. Uh, there was a, a number there, um, with regard to the construction schedule, uh, both Councilmember Mason and Councilmember Medina. Absolutely, uh, both of, uh, the project manager and the construction manager are meeting with the contractor and they are fine-tuning, uh, the, the timeline and the work that, uh, will be happening in each phase and that information will be published on the website. It will be a part of the status report and, uh, and, and, and updated, uh, monthly as appropriate. Uh, and you will certainly receive that both in written form and, uh, when the presentations occur. Uh, the, the, all the recommendations about, uh, things to have on the website, um, the schedule, uh, FAQs, um, uh, we, we, we will, uh, address those, um, and I, I believe all of those are intended, uh, already to be on the website or, or, or already on there. Uh, with regard to what is being salvaged, uh, we will include that, um, in the, in the first, um, monthly report. I don't want to, we, we, we did prepare to answer that question. I know a lot of people have asked, uh, is the floor being salvaged? Yes. As a part of the, um, the contract, uh, the, the, uh, general contractor does have a subcontractor that is a salvage contractor. And so they will be going in and, and salvaging, uh, materials. I will provide a list of those. Uh, with regard to the monthly meetings, uh, absolutely, we do understand that Councilmember Mason made a request to have the, the contractor at a monthly, uh, city council meeting. Uh, in looking at, and what's sort of normal, uh, and, and commonplace and sort of ensuring that we have the, the right amount of meetings, but not having a, a monthly council, uh, updated, monthly, uh, rack update and, 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 um, and all of the monthly reports. It is our professional recommendation, uh, that a, the staggered approach that we outlined, which is a monthly advisory committee meeting that includes eight, eight members, two members of the city council, two members of the planning commission, two members of the park and recreation commission, and two members of the foundation, meet monthly, uh, where the contractor, as well as the project manager, construction manager will be there. The city council and the public will receive a written public wor- uh, update that will be on the website. Uh, in addition, there will be quarterly updates, uh, both at the city council, um, and at the, um, San Bruno Community Foundation. Uh, Councilmember Mason, uh, mentioned a number of potential actions that would need to be agendized. Uh, whether those need to be agendized or happen is sort of different from any monthly update. Uh, you can't make a decision, uh, at a monthly update if it's not agendized. And so if we do have an item that needs to be agendized, we will agendize that absolutely, uh, and bring that, uh, to the, to the appropriate body. So, uh, no worries and, um, concern that we will not, uh, be able to break those to the council, uh, in a timely fashion.
Just, if, uh, City Manager, if, if I could, there was also, uh, the business plan which both, uh, uh, Vice Mayor and Councilmember brought up, um, as well as change orders.
Right. So, um, we, we've committed to inform the city council of, of change orders. That, that's our normal customary process. We will do that. Uh, with regards to the business plan, um, staff is working on that. Council knows that there was a, um, uh, positional request that, uh, that, that was not approved to help with that. Uh, we are looking at when to bring that back to the city council. A number of the, the, um, comments of that the city council made at that time was, let's sort of get through with the groundbreaking and, uh, and, and launch the project before we, we, we look at that position. Uh, but staff, uh, it, it is on their work plan, uh, as we mentioned before. The, the main effort, uh, frankly, to date, has been working on getting the building permitted and working on bringing the contractors on board. And then, uh, staff will be dev- devoting, uh, time to returning to the business plan and bringing, uh, recommendations and actions, uh, before the city council. You do have that written report, but there is an implementation action plan that goes with that, uh, that, that is still a work product that, uh, staff will need to get to. Um, and, and so that, that will happen. Uh, resources, of, of course, are a significant issue. Uh, there was also a question about putting the email address on, uh, the, uh, construction sign. Uh, I don't have an answer for that, but we'll talk about that with the team.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have, uh, I'm gonna turn to the, uh, public, but I want to check in with Councilmember Hamilton and Salazar if you have anything at this moment with questions?
I, I don't have any questions, but, uh, you know, I'll, uh, uh, chime in with everyone else saying, you know, this is exciting to have this project, uh, starting up and, uh, really appreciate the update.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Uh, well, ditto my colleagues' comments on that, but I have no additional questions at this time.
Thank you. Um, we do have a member of the public, uh, with questions or comments. If we could, uh, bring him in at this time, and anybody else from the public, this would be the time to raise your hand because we're gonna bring it back to council after.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Yeah, I, I just got two questions. Is, um, the new, uh, center, is that gonna have the same amount of employees that, that we had at the old center? And if not, will the costs that are gonna be in this business plan cover any new staffing? Thank you.
Thank you for your questions. City Manager, do you have, um, I know that's in the business plan if, if I'm correct, which I know we're, we're still working on.
So, so the, the business plan does have a recommended, uh, organizational structure as well as, uh, costs, both a cost structure and a revenue structure as part of that. Um, there's a business plan and, and then there's sort of the work that needs to be done as we march to opening day, uh, and putting together the implementation action plan. Uh, and so, yeah, yes, the, uh, the, at a high level, the answers to, uh, the com- uh, community members, uh, questions, yes, they are incorporated in the business plan. Uh, will there need to be additional augmented staffing? Yes. Uh, does the business plan have a revenue structure that covers that? Yes. Uh, when we talk about staffing of the, of our community services division, that is sort of a longer conversation, uh, that we, um, sort of don't have time, uh, to go into now. That, that is really a, a, a part of that, uh, plan. And there, there's a, there's a staffing model that is laid out very clearly, uh, with, within that business plan. Uh, and when we look at the staff that, uh, the department has today, uh, they ac- ac- actually have, uh, less staff than they had two and a half years ago. And so there, there's, there's a number of things, and we haven't been running programs, right? For, or, uh, at least a year and a half of those two years. And so there's a number of staffing configurations and, and sort of, there's, there's a new community role that, that, that will provide rental revenue and staffing that and having the maintenance standards, uh, for that, uh, is, is factored into the business plan. That's a level of, of, uh, or an added program that we don't have now. So we, we certainly have to, have to staff for that program, but there is a, a, a business plan model that has, uh, uh, expenses being covered by the revenue.
Okay, thank you. And we're gonna bring it back to the city c- council and, uh, Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I, I wanted to better understand, um, what the, what the request is to council right now. I know it's, uh, it's under, um, reports, but I'm wondering if you're asking for a majority of council to say that in lieu of a monthly report to the public, it would be the advisory committee that the reports are made to? Because, um, although I made the request, it was supported by a majority of council to have a monthly update to the council. And so this is being, it sounds like this is being proposed as an alternate to the request. Um, and I, you know, I think it's one thing to have a written report. I do think it's another thing to come, uh, to the council with an actual, a presentation, um, that the public can watch. And we make it accessible to, uh, to the public as accessible as possible. And I think most of us know that the council is probably gonna be, um, potentially more well-known than the committees, um, as we just heard from one of our committees, that it's sometimes hard to get attendance and they've gone out because of social media, but committees don't have the same, um, necessarily social media presence or, you know, invitations to attend meetings, et cetera, as the council may have. So I guess I would just call it outreach. So what I'm really trying to get at is where's the maximum, um, potential for transparency for the public to watch what's happening on a monthly basis for report outs? And I still do believe that that's with the council. Um, I also wanted to ask what, what authority is the advisory committee taking on, uh, if this should move forward? Um, because up until now, my understanding was that they were assisting with, uh, getting the rack to the groundbreaking. Um, so what exactly would this look like and what decisions would be made slash recommendations by the committee?
So, uh, beginning with, uh, the first questions to the mayor. There's no other comment?
Sorry, City Manager, should I, let me just ask the last question so that they're all together. Um, you did make a comment about the council, um, not approving the hundred ninety-four thousand dollar position, um, this year. And I wanted to make sure that I was clear because I believe the, um, the rack business plan was already received. And so I'm not, I just want to make sure I'm clear, um, because what, what I think is being requested is just, um, a clear presentation on what the business plan is, and it appears to already be written. So where, um, I guess where do we need the additional position right now to have a presentation on the business plan?
City Manager, uh, do you want me to go, uh, to Councilmember Hamilton her first question, or did you want to?
Sure, uh, why don't I provide a, a brief response, uh, to, uh, Councilmember Mason? Um, the agendized item, uh, that we're, uh, dealing with up now is a presentation on the, uh, communication plan. There's not an agendized action, uh, should, uh, the council, uh, did ask staff to come back with a communication plan. There was certainly a request by Councilmember Mason to have the contractor attend a monthly, uh, meeting, uh, and be present at the city council. Staff did express some concerns with that at that time and said, let us go back and develop, uh, a communication plan and present that to you, and that's what we're doing tonight. Uh, that communication plan does not include the request that Councilmember Mason made for the contractor, uh, to come to the city council, uh, and provide a, a monthly update at the council meeting. It does however include a monthly, uh, update report to the city council as well as the public, um, and a monthly present, uh, presentation, uh, public at the rack advisory committee that includes eight members of, 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 um, various bodies, uh, in the community. And it's staff's professional recommendation that, that that is the appropriate, uh, venue for the contractor to be present at, uh, with the goal of, uh, to, to address any issues that, on a monthly basis, at the, at the lowest level possible. And, and as we said, that, um, there will absolutely be transparent communication. There's contact information, uh, on the sign, uh, there will be social media posts. There will be ways that people, if they have a concern, can reach out and actually get that concern addressed than having to come, uh, at a public comment, uh, at a city council meeting. And we do have a project manager that has managed, uh, a, 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 a host of public projects that can, uh, o- opine on what is normal, uh, and, and commonplace and, and, and what actually works for an efficient, uh, wo- wo- of project. Uh, with regard to the business plan, uh, absolutely, uh, what I articulated was that, um, at budget time, staff did request the rest of the addition of a position that was actually a restoration of another position. It was not a new position, uh, to the department. Um, but that position was to support. It was a deputy director position that is included within the business plan uh, and would support the development of all the work that needs to happen during the two-year construction cycle as well as into the new facility. And so, uh, because that position was not approved, that workload still needs to be done, recognize that. Uh, and staff will do that, um, as I mentioned to, to council on numerous occasions. Staff's primary focus up until this point has been project management of the project to get the permits approved and to get groundbreaking. And now that we've accomplished that, we intend to return to the business plan with the staffing and the resources we have. That does not mean that, that will be the only resources that we have. We will, um, again, return to the city council, uh, with, um, a presentation of the organizational structure as well as the staffing, uh, to operate the facility. Um, with With, I think that concludes my response to Councilmember Mason's questions.
Thank you, city manager. Councilmember Hamilton?
So I mean, I like the idea of having the the subcommittee or the advisory committee meetings and having the public and have an opportunity to engage with the folks at the lowest level, as was said. But I do share a concern that, you know, there's there's two members of the city council on that advisory committee, but there's three that are not. And for the three that are not, there would be no avenue for asking questions because it will be inappropriate for us to it for the other three members to attend the advisory meeting and participate in it in any way. So the, might I offer as a perhaps a compromise is in addition to to what's listed in the communication plan, perhaps just have staff provide a summary once a month of what was presented at the advisory committee to the full council. And that would give the rest of us an opportunity to to ask questions. I would, it wouldn't be a, I don't think we would have time during our meetings to do a full rehash of everything that happened at that advisory committee meeting. But just, you know, it would be almost like a report app. This, you know, this is what was discussed, there were there were concerns from the public about X, Y, and Z. Those were addressed. And and then, you know, the meat of the of what was what was presented at the at the advisory committee. And the rest of it can just be in the packet for our for our for our education. Just offering that as a potential compromise.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other comments or questions from colleagues on this, on the topic or discussion?
Well, can I get an answer on whether that's feasible?
Thank you, councilmember.
Or that could even be considered, anything?
City manager, I'm gonna, sorry to bring this into, on this again, but what are your thoughts on what Councilmember Hamilton said?
As as a city manager's getting ready or turn off his, turn on his mic, I would say, you know, what I think is most critical and important is that issues don't wait, I shouldn't say issues, concerns or information to the community doesn't wait a month. That's why at the lowest level, there's those phone numbers and websites and that they can contact immediate. Not to wait, because if I have to wait three weeks to be able to say, I have a concern and I live nearby, I think that would be a challenge to me. I know as some, some in the community may not know, but each council member and the city manager have a one-on-one which certainly things can be updated and or concerns can be raised too, so those can be brought forward. So I do feel that what the ask was, was to have an availability for the community and the public to kind of to have those interests to be updated on that, but as well as to have that opportunity to ask more of those detailed questions as the last speaker did.
So sure, I was looking for Rod, the city's project manager.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry for interrupting. If he's still looking for our city manager, still looking for him, I was gonna propose that, look, the first meeting is going to be Zoom, I'm presuming. So let's proceed with the plan to go forward as proposed as we get more information when we do meet in person. Because currently, if it's gonna, if we're going to be meeting in Zoom, then all council could watch that Zoom meeting after it's recorded. And then we can kind of go forward from there because it is, it is, and I'm relying on my construction experience, it is, it is a lot of additional work. I think we have plenty of update time with the proposal. I don't see too much of an improvement in 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 that information by having the construction manager there at council every month. We are getting a copy of the report and we also have access to seeing the the committee meeting. Now, if something is not correct in in that assumption or what I heard, then then I would change my mind. But I think we have pretty good coverage.
And I would say, because I, yeah, please, councilmember, please.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, to interrupt you. Mayor, I just want to just quickly reiterate that my my suggestion was not that the construction manager provide that update. That a member of city staff would provide a recap of the of the previous advisory meeting. And then that then that item would be on the agenda and it would give the rest of us an opportunity to to ask a question or or whatever. Because I'm also understanding the, you know, timing issue, you know, paying people to be after hours, all those types of things that are, you know, additional challenges to having that full meeting take place during a council meeting. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear in my suggestion.
Okay, thank you. And I was looking for Rod and I do not see him in the attendees or unfortunately at this time. And and I just, and then we're gonna go to the city manager. And I did want to say that Councilmember Mason asked about the the advisory committee, you know, what is, I think the question was like, what authority do they have? I think she said it nicer. But it has none because it obviously does not have a majority of any body. And things all from there had gone to Park and Rec, had gone to the foundation, had gone to the city council. And then the city council obviously makes the approvals on those expenditures and items. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. Absolutely, with regard to the advisory committee, they they are advisory. Again, a update, a agenda update at the city council is not an opportunity to make a decision. So should there need to be a decision made, that would need to be agenda appropriately at the city council whether there is a agenda update on the city council on a monthly basis or not. With regard to providing a monthly update on the project at a city council meeting, my professional recommendation would be that if we do that, it is the city's project manager that do that versus having a staff person then take on that. Because the the knowledge transfer and then being able to respond to whatever questions the city council has, I wouldn't want to sort of have have a gap and and have a staff member not be able to answer the question. The the city's day-to-day point person and liaison to the contractor and the contract manager is our project manager. That is the person that is going to provide all of the updates to all of the various bodies. That person is also the person that will respond to constituent questions as well as any question that the council member has. So absolutely, councilmembers can ask the city manager a question, but just like the public can reach out to the project manager, the the city council can reach out to the project manager. And I don't want you to think that because there's not a forum at your agenda business meetings every month, that there's not a way that if you have a question to 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 get the answer. What the communication plan that was developed, it was developed in order to provide transparency, provide written reports to the public, have social media posts on a regular recurring basis, a monthly report to the pub, to the to the city council, and a forum where there is a monthly public meeting that anyone can come to, to to hear about what's going on or to ask any questions. If the city council would also like to have that at one of your two monthly business meetings, we can plan for that conversation, book the time and 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 have that. My recommendation would be that if we do that, we bring the resource that has the information to respond to any questions you have and that's the city's project manager.
And I did see that Rod is back with us just as an FYI. Councilmember Hamilton?
All right, so I'll, I'll try one last compromise. And I'm hearing all the, I'm hearing all the feedback and I understand it. What if, once a month, under under announcements and presentations, there's a reminder for folks about the monthly advisory meeting upcoming? Then people know, so those those members of the public, and there are many who come only to this meeting to get their information about the city, that we're at least once a month reminding people that the advisory committee is meeting, that they have the, that they have the the ability to attend those meetings and ask questions directly and also provide the the other communication avenues that are that are listed on the sign. That would be, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't even change them.
Councilmember Hamilton, this is an important project to the community. And as as things start to evolve, I think people have more interest, just like what are you salvaging? You would think people were saying, but I mean, they're sentimental, there's, folks just want to know. I think that being able to, under presentations and announcements, to announce the meeting and the avenues of which always to remind folks of where they can. Because again, my my objective would be to address things quickly and not wait because then they just become more challenging and frustrating. So with just it having a present, an announcement of the upcoming meeting, I'm I'm fine with that. Councilmember Mason, and then I hear if there's anything else from the vice mayor and Councilmember Salazar so we can move on getting to consent, please.
I I would just reiterate the importance of this coming to the council. I appreciate staff's time and the recommendation. But I do want to say at the end of the day, if we go over $50 million, it's the five of us that will be asked to make that decision. And and we will be asked to approve anything over 50 million. And so I do think it's important that it be coming to the council. And as far as, again, transparency, I understand that we will be getting a monthly report. But a lot of this is not so much about what we're getting and what we can read via email or on the website. But for those members of the public who are watching our meetings, what they too are able to see at our city council meetings. So, thank you.
Thank you. Vice mayor, your mic is on, did you wish to speak?
I'm good. I I just want to make sure that when we start having these meetings, which there's, there's going to be one next month, and it will be via Zoom and it will be recorded. And so anybody could, could, all of us could watch it. And the public is invited to attend the meeting, if that's correct. And they could submit the questions in advance so that it can be answered. And with the FAQ on the website, I think we're going to have a pretty good coverage of questions.
Understood. City manager, you want to?
Thank you. We can certainly include it as a monthly announcement. The one thing that staff reminded me of is at the advisory committee meeting, it's actually a form that's better to delve down into an issue that may be raised and and addressed and versus sort of it'd be just a presentation at a business meeting where the public can make a comment and there can be that dialogue. A sort of having it at the committee level actually allows a better format and and more time for for those issues to be talked about and maybe an appropriate response given at that time. So just wanted to make that point. But but absolutely, we can include an announcement on the agenda of where the the monthly presentation updates will be as well as all of the other avenues that are talked about.
Okay, thank you for the the feedback on that last thing about being able to dive more as well. Okay, colleagues, do we have a somewhat of a concurrence from some of us or that the presentation that the manager has made is fine with the addition of announcing it with under presentations and announcements of the advisory meeting and again, the other communication outlets that residents have immediately, you know, via phone, email, et cetera? For now, obviously, everything can be modified later. Councilmember Hamilton?
This is an announcement and presentation, so there's, we can't, we can't recommend anything anyway. So it's, I don't think it matters.
Well, was it within the presentation, but okay. Well, with Councilmember Hamilton's comment, then is it, city manager, do you have enough information from us? Or what I what I don't want to see is that we're leaving here and and city manager saying, well, okay, I've heard a multitude of things, so I'm not sure what we're saying. City manager? He gave us a presentation of what what he was wishing for for the communications plan, which was asked to come back to us. But maybe there's clarity clarity from the city attorney that needs to be had.
I think direction and the desire of the city council is clear. We'll proceed with the communication plan with the addition of adding a on on the announcement at the monthly city council meetings, the information about the advisory committee meetings and proceed forward. There were a number of questions asked with regard to information that's going to be on the website. We noted those. And then I believe Councilmember Medina asked a question with regard to what information will be salvaged and we will include that in a subsequent update as well as provide the city council with the calendar information and a timing on returning to you with the business plan, implementation action plan. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager, for, again, the presentations and the questions. And Rod, thank you for standing by and I appreciate that. With that, we'll move on to consent calendar. Item five, all items are considered routine to the implement and were implemented at an earlier council meeting and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. As you see, we have items A through E. Is there anything that somebody wants to have completely removed for a separate vote? Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I did email Melissa, our clerk theremin earlier around the minutes and a discrepancy in the minutes. She suggested that we table the minutes until the next council meeting. So 5C and then 5D. If we could just have, I just have a comment on 5D when we have a moment.
Okay, so asking for 5C to be tabled until the next council meeting and then 5D for comments. So I'm seeing nothing for separate vote. Is there anything else other than that? Vice mayor Medina?
Yeah, I apologize. That was 5D as in dog or B as in body?
I, I, D as in dog is what I wrote down.
Excellent, because I had a, I thought it was interesting to receive update and it wasn't, I was expecting like a verbal update, which we normally do. Because I do have a couple of questions on it. So then I guess it would be pulling item D for some questions.
Okay, D has already been, well, you're saying pulled for for questions, okay, yeah, not a separate vote. Okay, anything else from colleagues? So right now, we would have items A, B, and E are okay. C has been asked to have it tabled, maybe take action on that, but let's go to item D. And that is receive update on the city's response efforts to COVID-19. Councilmember Mason, here's the time for your comments, please.
Yeah, thank you. And just an update on the council comments from the last meeting. I had requested an update on the city's efforts around staff. And I know that, and that was in response to one of the public comments we received. And although we did receive, and I thank staff for the plans, we received hundreds of pages of plans and their, with their attachments around the guidelines. At this point, as a as a policymaking council, I think the question really is around whether we're, what are we looking at for staff as everybody returns to work? And when I say returns to work, I mean, return, you know, maybe somebody who might be telecommuting full time or just for staff who has already returned to work. Are, is the city looking at direction from council? Or is the city already working on a plan around requirements for testing weekly or vaccination requirements? It'd be good to know where the city is with that. I know the president went from requiring regular testing for those non-vaccinated to last week requiring testing, I mean, requiring full vaccinations of the executive branch and even extended that to some of the contractors. So and a number of cities are now requiring vaccinations for their employees. And I'd really just like to know where the city stands and then so that we as a council have have a better idea of where we need to either initiate some action. If it's not already initiated on the staff, maybe staff is working on something that's coming. Um, if it's not already initiated on the staff, maybe staff is working on something that's coming back to us for a vote. Um, or at this point, um, whether I should just go ahead and request that this item be agendized for the next meeting so we can have a full discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and Vice Mayor Medina, why don't I have you go next, if you if that's okay?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Um, um, so it is great that the vaccination rates in 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 the county are on the high side, um, in in the nineties. Um, I was wondering if if, and these are some questions that were asked previously from um, from the public. Um, do we have any data on the percentage of city staff that have been vaccinated? And kind of pigging back on on Councilwoman Mason's question, where are we going as a city um, and um, any mandates of vaccinations have have, what's the plan there? Have we contacted our bargaining units to see what their feelings on it? So um, we used to have countywide meetings on COVID. Um, and that that went away. And are we waiting for the for the county to provide us the guidance? So um, I'd like to hear what staff thinks, what they feel. And then if we need to, then we, as Councilwoman Mason said, we would need to provide some direction if if we wanted to take that. So um, those are my comments and questions.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. City staff, is there anybody who wants to add to the report at this time? Uh, yeah, yes, City Manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, with without going into um, all of the the steps that the staff uh, has taken internally, uh, I'll just get straight to the heart of the part of of the question, which is, does the city have a max a mandatory vaccination requirement and uh, where are we on that? Um, so uh, as the city, as I uh, informed the city council, uh, we are looking into a vaccination requirement. We do have a draft of a vaccination policy. We have had communications with the union about that. There are a number of um, municipalities across the Bay Area and across the the country that have implemented vaccination mandates. Uh, wh- within our county, the county uh, Norview, a number of the cities. I think there's only actually one city in the county that has a a vast mandate. We are in conversations with uh, the other cities. And then and frankly, we're squarely in line uh, with with where everyone, where I I believe um, most of the cities are. And I've talked to uh, uh, almost all of the city managers in the county uh, and and offered uh, to to be to be a leader uh, in a countywide program. Uh, as as the council knows and the public knows, that uh, the president uh, recently announced uh, and directed OSHA to develop a vaccination requirement for employers over a hundred thousand. That will um, um, uh, apply to the city of San Bruno. Uh, we do have our our draft policy uh, that we uh, are evaluating. We are socializing internally, uh, and we will um, look toward uh, the OSHA guidelines. So we will roll out a program that that that's in these tweaks. Um, we uh, very early on, uh, offered um, testing and and voluntary testing that continues to be available. We are also in the process of of scaling our testing uh, to uh, have that available at all job sites uh, and on a mandatory basis. Uh, and so uh, there are a number of policies that I know the council has received that have been active. And absolutely, uh, the city of San Bruno is squarely in line with where the the vast majority of municipalities are, which are um, the 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 going tide uh, that that I believe and I believe in uh, are will will be for vaccination requirements. Uh, and so we're we're absolutely evaluating that. As I mentioned, we have a draft policy that is being socialized. And I can, yes, communications have uh, occurred with the union.
And City Manager, you had said uh, a hundred thousand, was that the correct number? Or is those who have appointments of over a hundred thousand?
I'm sorry, I it's one hundred. If I said one hundred thousand, I was sadly mistaken and um, not thinking clearly.
No, 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 it's not a problem. I just, so uh, just for clarity for all of that, obviously, we have the city of San Bruno, uh, and a lot of municipalities in the county, not all, do have over a hundred employees. So OSHA's regulations and standards would set those guidelines also uh, for the city as well. Um, any other um, questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, oh, go ahead.
Oh, uh, let's see, I have, let me, let me, Councilmember Salazar had his hand up, and then we'll go to the City Manager, then we'll go to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I I just um, yeah, I wanted to make a point that, you know, it is, it is important for us as elected council members and representatives of the community to understand that uh, although we're a policymaking body, we are not privy to making every policy decision for the city. And um, you know, I I think it's important that we understand there are some delineations where clearly it's it's in the public's interest that professional staff make decisions and not elected uh, people. And uh, you you know, and I make that comment because, you know, if we look at what's happening nationwide, where um, elected people are in positions where they can make public safety decisions, it's been a disaster, and it's been so um, haphazard in the way different states have chosen to approach um, what we do with with this pandemic. And you know, even within our own state, we see uh, political people bending to the will of um, public and making decisions not necessarily based on on the science, which is what we should be doing, but rather on uh, what might be popular or, you know, what might uh, keep us in office. So um, you know, just it, I I just wanted to put that out there, just sort of as as a cautionary note that uh, you know, there are clearly cases where we, as elected people, have to defer to professional staff. And we have to allow uh, the people that are closest to the details and um, frankly, free to make the the tough decisions, uh, even when there's something that we wouldn't necessarily um, go along with. So um, you know, I I just wanted to put that out there. Um, I think uh, I think our staff has been doing a great job in in managing this um, you know, this disaster that was thrust on us. And uh, you know, our our city manager, who's also uh, during these situations, wears the hat of uh, our uh, emergency services coordinator, has um, has been very on top of um, you know, making sure that we're addressing the issues. And um, you know, our our public safety staff has has also been very engaged, very responsive. And so uh, I I I just want to make sure that we don't go down a path where we start um, trying to second guess what might be happening because we're hearing um, loud voices in the community that may um, derail uh, the city's best efforts. So I I just want to offer that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Um, City Manager, did you have something you wanted to open on?
There was another question, uh, thank you, uh, Mayor. There was another question by Councilmember Medina, which is, are we ready to uh, um, release this this stat that we do have on vaccinations uh, of city employees? We do have information on city employees that are vaccinated. At this point, we do not have the complete universe. And so uh, we will be uh, acquiring that information as we uh, roll out our vaccination uh, requirements. But uh, at this point, uh, I do not have that information uh, to to respond right now to Councilmember Medina's question on uh, what percentage of of staff are vaccinated. I I think it's also, uh, and and thank you, uh, Councilmember Salazar, for making those comments. I think it's also mindful to know that, like all municipalities, we've we've been going through a a roller coaster of requirements. There there was a a brief period where um, uh, there was a benefit to providing your employer with your vaccination status. Uh, and we in a lot of municipalities and corporations had employees do that. We know that since that time, people have uh, been vaccinated but uh, have not provided us with that information. So uh, we want to have a process to collect that information to ensure that we are releasing accurate information so there's not a misunderstanding when data is released on the vaccination status of 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 employees. Because that that is critical information. We would not want people to make uh, decisions on um, that they're going to utilize city services or city emergency services based on incomplete data. And and so recognize that we are having those conversations, and it is absolutely not just me. The city's emergency operations center is active, has been active for the last year and a half. Uh, and uh, your fire chief, your police chief, uh, as well as all your HR personnel and personnel from across the city are in meetings, uh, dealing with these uh, challenging decisions and uh, and and are working sort of dutifully uh, to develop policy that makes sense uh, for the organization uh, and uh, that protects everyone's public health. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I I I don't think we're getting close to anything uh, to be too concerned about uh, in addressing Councilman Salazar's question. The science is there. The best way to protect your community is to get vaccinated. Um, so um, that's what the science says. I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I just want to say I appreciate um, Councilmember Salazar's comments and want to um, hopefully rest assured, the rest assured that that is not any of the intentions here. I think the intentions here are to save lives, especially those of our employees. Um, and I think that what's important to note is that uh, we had not received a public update on any of um, the recommendations or anything that was being worked on uh, within the city. And so what I want to make sure of is that as a council, as I said in the beginning, if the city manager needs our support, that he has it. And that if he doesn't need our support and he's going to bring something to us at a later time, um, then we will wait. But I, what I want to make sure of is that we are being as supportive as possible. Um, and that if we need to take some action, then we also need to know that. But so that we're not kind of uh, contradicting the work that each other's hand is is doing within our system of checks and balances. Um, and I also want to reiterate uh, Councilmember Salazar's comments that that I do think the city has done a a great job up until now. And um, I hope we continue to prioritize the safety of our staff. Thank you.
And um, I'll I'll hopefully I'll I'll close on this, and then we'll get back to adopting some consent. You know, this is uh, unprecedented, of course, um, obviously. And I think when, and I I do appreciate Councilmember Salazar, um, I believe every member of the council today and in the past, I believe that the administrative staff, department heads, the assistant manager, the city manager, city attorney, et cetera, always have had and still and have the well-being of the staff. Um, I don't think anyone would do anything to, with malice intent or not caring, uh, put any of our staff at at risk. There are avenues for staff to come forward. Um, and I think I like more the attitude of, we're here to assist, if called upon, where we can. Um, but however, they are the professionals. They are dealing with the county. They are dealing with uh, the community. And as you know, the uh, Dr. Morrow had been making the standards, and the county was leading that charge. And now they deferred to the state. Um, so in essence, I think uh, we have to allow them uh, who are in those areas day to day uh, and have faith and confidence in our team. But um, I'll just reiterate, I think that all members of the council are here and want to assist if necessary or needed to en- ensure a a good process for staff, for their well-being and safety, and also just to know that we're here supporting um, the uh, the SL, uh, the senior leadership team, as well as our city employees. So with that, um, what I'm going to ask is that we approve consent items A, B, D, and E. If there is um, action to go ahead and approve those. And what I'm what was going to do is have C and make a motion to have that table. So any action from council?
I'll I'll make a motion that we approve consent items A, B, D, and E.
Thank you. So there's a second, okay. Hamilton, Medina, uh, motion, second roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye. And now we have item uh, C, which was the regular meeting minutes for the regular meetings of October, the twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. And if we can have uh, if if council wishes to table that, as was indicated by council.
A motion to table the minutes to the next council meeting.
Good, Chair. Uh, before we take a vote, can uh, would it be okay if we got just a a high-level understanding of uh, what what was inaccurate? Because you know, if if we do delay this, then the the minutes aren't published, and uh, there's a delay in in having that on the website. So if it's something minor that we can correct uh, as part of the motion, I would I would prefer that. But if it's something more substantive, then I'll I'll go along with tabling.
Um, we did have a motion from Mason and consecutive from Hamilton, although which was on the question. Councilmember Salazar opposed that. I also believe our the city clerk is now dealing with the election. Um, and so I uh, I know she may not be available, but Councilmember Mason, did you want to expound a little of the? Um, or is it as far as the minutes that could be corrected? Or does it need more in-depth uh, review by the clerk and others?
So the I mean, can the the minutes are already posted as part of this packet. Um, the one of the changes would be that the council comments aren't complete. And so as much as there's an, uh, you know, we have these action minutes that we're still discussing as part of our policies and procedures, we've um, never really talked about what should and shouldn't be included in the council comments. And because not all council comments are agendized, I do think that it's really important that they be part of the record. Um, so I messaged um, our clerk earlier, and uh, she said for suggested changes to the minutes, I would suggest recommending the item be pulled from consideration and moved to the next meeting. And so I'm following her recommendation.
And I believe she is not present at for for her other duties as the elections officer. Um, so with that said, uh, we're going to, any other on the question? So we have a motion and a second. Mason, Hamilton, to table uh, the minutes to the next regular council meeting. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina? Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye. Okay, um, let's see, thank you. Um, uh, right now, um, we approve the consent tabling the one item, but we also have a member of the public, and we'll say that it's open to under consent uh, because we've kind of gone through that. And so if there's any other members of the public that wish to speak, if you could raise your hand. And um, I'd ask if uh, we can bring Mr. Evangelist into the meeting, please, for the three minutes.
There's one hand up, and that's Jim Evangelist. And Jim, you're in the room. You can unmute yourself.
Okay, um, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, I'm just, I would like to uh, address Michael Sal, uh, Councilmember Salazar's comments regarding the city's uh, the elected official's responsibilities toward to overseeing the COVID response of our city government. We elected you as council members to make these difficult decisions. Uh, it would be like passing off, I I mean, you have access to the same experts that you would rely upon the city manager to give you the information on. Uh, I think it's uh, it's really a shirking of duties to uh, allow these. I don't believe that um, for instance, I I I would be surprised if anybody on staff is any more of an expert about how to respond to this COVID uh, than than you you are as the elected official. I think it's really your responsibility to make these difficult decisions. So please, uh, I'm beseeching all council members to take seriously our city government's response to its workforce and and keeping everybody safe. Because ultimately, it keeps the public safe as well. So that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm seeing uh, no other publics up, and that will Um, seeing, uh, no other publics up and that will conclude consent. We're gonna move on to item number six, conductive business. Item A, adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with governmentjobs.com Inc. Doing business as NeoGov, I believe, for human resource software services in the amount not to exceed 222,718 for a term of 36 months with an annual renewal option. Turn that over to begin with our city manager. Of course, he'll bring in, uh, other staff. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor Medina. Uh, we are having minor technical, uh, slowness today, uh, because our city clerk is also the elections officer. So we're, we're, we're dual duty. Uh, to the mayor, uh, members of the council and the public, Javon Brogan, city manager. Uh, the item that is before you, uh, is purchasing, uh, new workforce management, uh, software. Uh, it's a important effort, uh, that, that I know the council knows, but it's probably something that the public doesn't know, is that we've really had an intensive effort over the last, uh, two and a half years to improve our, our technology. And the technology that underpins all of the work that we do on behalf of the citizens of San Bruno, uh, in really bringing us into, um, uh, the 21st century. Uh, and, and COVID has actually, uh, sort of launched that, uh, forward in warp speed. Uh, and so this has been a, been a project. This is a funded project, uh, that, uh, we presented to the city council, um, during, during budget season. Uh, and now, uh, we have selected the vendor and we are ready to execute it and begin implementation. Uh, and so while, uh, another effort is not a part of this presentation, I'll just, uh, take the opportunity, uh, to, to tell the city council and the public that another one of those technology improvement efforts is hard at work and that is developing a new website for the city of San Bruno. Uh, and our, and our, our city website that will, uh, not just be the public facing website, but underpin a lot of the, um, digital, uh, services that we can provide to residents. So that project is, uh, past the stage of this project because that project has been approved in, as an implementation status. And then, uh, this one is, uh, sort of next on its heels. Uh, and so this presentation will be, uh, given by Jennifer Brazil, our, uh, assistant city administrator. Also, uh, we give her the title of our chief people officer, uh, because on a day-to-day basis, um, um, she cares for our people and supports our HR. Uh, and so I'll turn it over to Jennifer Brazil, who will provide this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, mayor and, uh, members of the council. Staff proposes implementation of workforce management software to support citywide personnel administration, applicant tracking and hiring, position control, benefit administration, lead management, time entry payroll and employee self-service. The city is in need of a system that's capable of integrating with any future enterprise resource planning system the city may select for financials in the next few years. As the current system was implemented in 2007 and is supporting its end life. The vendor has replaced Eden, which is our current system with a new product. The city plans to replace Eden over the next two years with a relevant ERP to address current and evolving needs. A financial system will need to cover the general ledger, purchasing accounts payable, accounts receivables, utility billing, cash sharing, project accounting, capital asset, member management and budgeting. The city uses Tyler Eden for its general ledger payroll function, Excel for human resource information, position control and budgeting, a third-party system for utility billing and cash sharing functions, and another third-party system for HDL and business licenses, and a separate third-party system for applicant tracking function. Um, oh. So tonight's presentation, I'm still on that side. Tonight's presentation will provide an overview of the functionality of the workforce management solution recommended by staff. We'll review the recruitment and selection model, onboarding A forms and records management features, the employee development, performance and workforce planning modules, including the learning management system as well as payroll, benefits, employee self-service, timekeeping and overall workforce management, which includes position control and human resource information database. So why are we changing now? The city currently does not have a workforce management system or a human resource information system. We currently utilize a simple online, um, applicant tracking system which offers application acceptance and limited capability for data analytics or candidate communication and outreach capabilities. Without a human resource information system, our data is stored on a variety of spreadsheets and paper files and through the existing ERP, which manages the payroll function. While there have been upgrades over the last 15 years, the software is antiquated and requires a great deal of manual processing. The time and resources needed to coordinate the manual workforce management and control of the citywide are tedious and inefficient. Modernizing our business processes will better utilize our limited resources and focus our time, energy and organization-wide talent on meaningful work. The human resources department sought out vendors over the last few years that can provide a workforce management solution. Many of our options were cost prohibitive or not customized for public sector or municipal environment. NeoGov offered a dynamic solution that included an option for supporting an integration for the city's payroll and benefits function. NeoGov is the leading public sector workforce platform provider delivering an integrated HR payroll and talent management solution, currently serving over 6,000 organizations. NeoGov's intelligent HR software supports the entire employee lifecycle. The recruitment selection module is an applicant tracking software suite providing tools to help us recruit and hire quality candidates and support compliance reporting. The software integrates with governmentjobs.com, which you may have heard of, which is the largest public sector specific job board in the U.S. It's designed to help attract quality candidates, help us hire faster and save on advertising. Governmentjobs.com opens the door to access to 39 million job seekers and direct links to social media posting and automated screening tools of qualified applicants. The system provides remains for enhancing communication through text messaging, online scheduling, and even electronic job offers and applicant self-service portal with an integrated background check process. The platform has top rankings on Google for public sector searches and has 14 of million applications submitted annually. The onboarding feature allows selected candidates to learn all about the organization prior to their first day of work. The newly hired employee can review policies, learn about the culture through videos, pictures, personal employee statements. They can meet their mentor or buddy to feel connected more quickly and get up to speed. New employees can learn about projects and job expectations, organizational values and goals, review posted articles, find resources and begin their new hire paperwork at their leisure. Having all of this information in advance allows the in-person orientation to focus on what's most important, getting accommodated and feeling welcome and supported, rather than rush to get paperwork and training completed during the orientation process. Managers can follow along and view the onboarding progress of their new employees to ensure that everything is on track and the new hire has a great first impression, helping to drive employee retention. The employee self-service feature provides transparency for employees to see the status and history of transactions that impact their employment and drive accountability through notifications and, oh, sorry, on the wrong slide. So A forms, as we apply to a more automated work environment due to pandemic, A forms support a variety of paperless workflows, complex routing approvals and workflows virtually. The system allows us to design and assign custom forms that are processed online and electronic signatures. We can develop customized forms and workflows and these forms can be customized, um, and stored through NeoGov's secure cloud. A forms can be used for assigning critical policy updates and other urgent documentation for electronic knowledge management for employees. This system tracks all forms and processes, ensuring timely completion and compliance with automated notifications and reminders to simplify accountability. A form stores all of the documents, um, for our employees through, um, the employee lifecycle. Working seamlessly with NeoGov's other products, uh, A forms acts as a central repository for all of our employee documents, um, in the product suite. For example, the new hire forms from onboard can be accessed in A forms. And the system provides one central repository for the employee paperwork, supporting the entire, entire employee lifecycle. So the employee self-service feature provides a transparency that our employees need. They can see the status, um, of their, all of their transactions, um, their history and, um, everything that impacts their employment, helping to drive accountability through notifications and reporting. The system enables our employees to self-initiate processes and they can begin their open moment, um, actually at their leisure and ease, um, and initiate any changes that need to be done through their mobile device. The perform module allows us to customize performance management, meeting the needs of our unique workforce, from police department or higher department to community services and all of our internal service department. The system allows us to build unique tools to track employee performance and provide constructive feedback to enhance workforce productivity overall. By integrating department objectives and individual performance metrics, we can track business continuity. The system also integrates with employee development tools, enabling our managers to connect with their direct reports, report on a regular basis to check in on their goals and initiatives and track productivity. They can have structured check-ins with online notes and create, um, this process from any device. They can input, um, their notes, they can provide feedback, they can list their PTOs, and they can also tie in, um, training and development tools. The tools empower managers to track employee performance and provide continuous feedback. That feedback drives performance success by setting up goals throughout the year. Managers and employees work together to make sure that these milestones are met along the way. Processes can be configured by department or position that make sure administering that remains as easy as possible so that we can make sure that, um, we refer to journal entries, historical reviews, job description, training history, and, um, make sure that we maximize opportunities for employee feedback. Pairing the, the performance process with training will help to ensure that employees not only see their strength, but also know how they can begin to experience if they need, if they need more support. We can utilize the system to better plan for the future with dashboards to measure workforce planning needs across all of our departments with detailed information on the organizational, organizational capacity of our workforce and the opportunities for continued growth and development. The system also offers a learning management, uh, platform. So it's called Learn. The Learn module is a custom course library integrated with Perform. Learn allows us to build customized courses, um, that actually have over 400 courses in the course library with a robust enduring catalog. Learn offers pre-built courses in appointment liability, human capital, health and safety, law enforcement, public works, and many more public sector focused courses. The module allows us to create our own courses where we can add quizzes and Word, PowerPoint, Adobe Acrobat. We can post online videos and, and create a lot of our own content. Courses can be grouped into learning plans for employees and tied to performance goals. Learn tracks the city's mandated training content, reducing our risk by developing trackable courses as well as offering license and certificate renewal reminders. When Learn, we can store results, um, completions and generate reports to document organizational compliance. Learn is also mobile friendly and it integrates with Google and Outlook calendars, making it easy for employees, employees to stay informed of the purchase format and completing them wherever they are. We can use, um, automated notifications and reminders to increase engagement and improve attendance and first completion rate. The core human resources such as payroll, benefits and timekeeping are within the HRAS function of NeoGov. Uh, it's the central hub for employee records, salary, benefits administration and workforce data that are all stored in the cloud. This module makes it possible for employees to view and update their information online, including their paycheck steps, direct deposit information, payroll deduction, time off balances, benefit elections, and, and more, all virtually. Employees can track their hours of work with online timesheet and approval workflow. They can add their predefined hours, clock in and out from a mobile device, and the system supports our complex payroll needs with the capability to manage retro case, future dating, FLO and SAV requirements, and our multiple union contracts. The system ensures we maintain compliance with the changing payroll law and integrates easily, easily with our general ledger and accounting suite. The system's configurable to meet our complex union agreement needs and requirements and sets up parameters to reduce human errors. It's a fully integrated talent management suite, provides a unified personnel platform from hire to retire. So the implementation plan would begin in January. And the beginning of the plan would be to, uh, set roles and responsibilities. We would put a project team together internally across departments. We would, uh, work with NeoGov to gather all of the relevant documents, rules, process descriptions and in order to, um, to prepare, so that would take about a month. The second phase would be the configuring the plan. So it would be putting together our, our benefits and payroll and time and attendance functions. The third phase would be core HR production. Working with each of our departments to set up the other modules. And that's estimated to take about eight weeks. And phase four would be, um, sort of go live. So it would be, um, implementation and training of our workforce. So we are recommending adoption of the resolution offering the city manager to execute a contract with governmentjobs.com doing business with NeoGov with human resource software services and amount not to exceed 222,718 dollars for a term of 36 months with an annual renewal option. What questions can I answer for you?
Thank you for the report. If we, um, could stop sharing, when, when you're able to do so, thank you. Um, if there's any members of the public that have any questions, now would be the time, um, to raise your hand. And let's turn it to city council for questions, please. Uh, Councilmember Hamilton, then Councilmember Salazar.
So, um, thank you very much for the, for the, uh, for the presentation. Um, I had sent one question in advance and I'm just gonna, um, just summarize it really fast, uh, cause, uh, cause a, a, a great answer was already sent, but I just want to summarize it for the, for the, uh, public who's watching. Um, you know, this, as, as we've just seen in the presentation, the purpose of this system was to, um, manage all of these, all these various, uh, processes for employees. And I had asked if, if there was any potential of using the system to organize and streamline our process for appointing citizens to our commissions, boards and committees. Um, because we know our, our processes we have in place for that are, are, um, fairly antiquated. And, um, the, the answer that came back was that we have the, that actually is, if that is not part of this, but it is part of the agenda management system, will be part of the agenda management system that is gonna be, um, rolled out, um, a bit later. So I'm very, very glad to see that that's, that that's part of it, that's, that's gonna be handled as well. Um, and the other comment that I have is that I'm happy to support, um, this expenditure because I've seen firsthand the value that a system like this can bring to an organization. Um, we deployed similar systems at my own workplace several years ago and it provided nearly instant improvements in efficiency. Um, and although the, the, the city here is actually approaching a little bit better by having, um, one system handle all of these rather than a, uh, a mismatch of a few different systems, which is what my company decided to do. So, um, I'm, uh, pleased just to, uh, see this moving forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and so I, I'm familiar with the NeoGov system, uh, having, uh, been an employee in another agency that, that uses. So I know it is a, a very, very good system, but it's also very expensive. And so my question was just really around the evaluation process and if other, other systems were looked at. and what other systems were looked at, how they compared and both in price and performance. And you know, are we sure that this is the best solution for an agency our size?
So we did look at other systems. When we initially looked at this, because we do have CalOps for applicant tracking, if we were only looking at performance or applicant tracking, I agree that I think the cost would have been probably something that would have prohibited us from moving forward. The complete NeoGov suite also includes the payroll and core human resources function, which we currently need because Eden is end of life and our ERP is a few years away. And so the fact that our payroll function is really not working for us anymore, the cost advantage of being able to have one system also incorporate payroll and the complete workforce management system actually made the value much greater for us. Because we are looking at down the line, a complete ERP and this, all of the different modules, the value of all of the different modules cover much of what we needed internally.
And then also I was curious about the impact to our very small IT department. Will there be additional workload for them? Or because this is a cloud-based solution, do we anticipate that the vendor will handle all support tickets and any installation issues or you know, anything related to employee adoption?
But that's a great question. Thank you for asking that. The, so the fact that it is a cloud-based system and NeoGov has an excellent reputation for their customer service, all of those customer support would go through NeoGov. There might be some need internally in terms of our systems from IT, but it would really just be in the initial setup. All of the additional services would be through the NeoGov customer service for applicants or our employees.
And does the initial installation include a migration of all of our existing data from whatever systems we have in place to the new platform?
It would. And NeoGov has, I think it was something like 6,000 customers, but they've pretty, they've refined it, their integration process and assured us that, you know, within three to four months, we can do a transition pretty smoothly.
And then in terms of training, because I know, you know, in my profession, I've rolled out a few different systems and training is always a hiccup where if it's not adequate, your employees struggle with adoption and ultimately projects fail because it's too hard to learn a new system or you know, it takes too long. So you know, what sort of training is included with the contract that we're approving?
So NeoGov does offer training, but they also, if you notice in the report, there's a transition in terms of pricing. So the first year has a lower price and the second year there's an increased price until there's sort of, the system is ramped up until we're sort of fully operating. And I think from my understanding, NeoGov sort of expects that there will be time for employees to truly get acclimated to fully understanding and utilizing the system. But they provide a variety of training options for staff. So in the development, in the various phases, they identify a project team internally and train our internal users to be super users and then those super users train our internal staff.
Yeah, then that's usually a really good way to roll it out. So okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, those are great questions. So first of all, I just want to congratulate staff, assuming this moves forward tonight. This should make your jobs hopefully a lot easier. And I know how exciting it is to get a new system. My questions might be for the city attorney. I just wanted to ask in reviewing the contract, whether the cost, I'm sorry, whether the information shared with a third party, it's mentioned two or three times in the contract, whether we can just request that that be upon written approval for the city every time it occurs. And then the second request is to ensure that the city receives full indemnification for any breach of private information or if a system should be hacked and it's the fault of the contractor. And then the last request is that the, apparently there's a provision around what city information is returned at the end of the contract. And it says that it could be destroyed upon request. So that I guess within the contract, there'd be something that identifies like a timeframe for when the city should request that information so that it's not just like open-ended. So meaning that if the contract ends on September 30th, that it'd be clear that if the city requests destruction within 30 days, that it'd be destroyed within 30 days so that there's no opportunity to sell the information or get it into someone else's hands accidentally or not. So those are the three recommendations that I would make for the contract. And my understanding is that there are still conversations being communicated back and forth. And outside of that, I hope, you know, I look forward to seeing staff make their jobs easier. Thanks.
We'll definitely take a look at all three of those issues, Councilmember Mason. Thank you for raising that.
Yeah, and the biggest one honestly, city attorney Zaffarano, is the indemnification. I think given, yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions from colleagues? Just wanted to clarify and I saw within the presentation, and I believe that with this new system, the city will be able to go to paperless. So we don't have to, they don't have to print 26 times a year paychecks or stubs. Because obviously they can look at online. And also I saw under the OSHA, so that therefore I'm understanding too that certificates can be within the employee file. If there are programs or requirements that have to be maintained, that can be also within this system and keep track, remind of those things. Is that correct?
That is correct. It'll be electronic employee files.
Okay, so all that's viable. And then I like Councilmember Salazar. I was a little concerned on the training and the IT, but Councilmember Salazar knows better. And I think it is one of those things, anything new sometimes is unique. And I've rolled out a system from the HR area. And when you're not used to it, it sometimes just takes a little TLC. But hopefully if they have the resource from the vendor, that would be very much appreciated. And I just think that it would, when something like this change gets rolled on, obviously it's efficient, it's effective. And again, just assisting all those to get up to speed and feeling comfortable. So if there are any other questions or comments from council, and I'm not seeing any members of the public. So this is a action item. It is a resolution. Is there any action from council?
The Chair. I will make a motion that we adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the contract with governmentjobs.com in an amount not to exceed 222,718 dollars for a term of 36 months.
I will second.
Motion made second and that's with an annual renewal option as well. Motion's second. Good. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye. Now we'll move on to item B, appoint members to the downtown ad hoc committee. As a summary, there was a presentation made by the vice mayor last time in regards to the concept, thoughts, kind of goals, objectives, et cetera. City manager sent, resent that out to city council. But as, just as a reminder of where that was since it was a couple of weeks ago, just as a reminder. So are there any questions in regards to just the presentation or the goals or parameters that were presented two weeks ago by the vice mayor? If not, then I will make a recommendation, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, Councilmember Mason.
All right, I just wanted to ask about the, so are we, are we in agreement on, I guess narrowing down the scope? I don't know that we came to like a conclusion on the scope of what the committee was going to be focusing on.
Fair. City manager, is that, and I know you didn't, or staff didn't have a heads up. Is there a way to share that screen of that item or that table of goals so we can just all take a look together and make sure we're in concurrence?
Yes, we're looking for that document now and try to hold up.
No, thank you very much. And then council, after this item is concluded, we're going to go ahead and take a few minute break. And then we will return and continue on with study session and then council comments. If there's any members of the public that wish to speak on this topic, now would be the time in which to go ahead and please raise your hand. And then what we're going to do is share a screen of a slide that was presented a couple of weeks ago. And then council's going to give clarification if necessary on what the goals and objectives are of the ad hoc and then make a recommendation of appointment and see what council wants it to do at concurrence or not. Thank you very much. So you can see here on, this is the goals to all council. Improve communication with our business community, build relationships, develop trust. Everybody can read it. I don't need to read it. So why don't we see if there was, Councilmember Mason, I'd like to, if it's okay, go back to you because you were just wanting to make sure we had clarity and on the scope. So was there items here that we wanted to kind of look at or go over?
Well, I just think that they're broad. So I think one of the suggestions that had been made was, you know, does the member, can the members of the committee attend the chamber of commerce meetings as is done in other cities? And I understand that a city staff member attends, but it's not, I would say it's not the same as having your elected members attend. And then the other, you know, the suggestion I had made was around maybe looking at the streetscape plan and then looking at the recent community foundation survey around downtown and reading through the feedback and saying what within the streetscape plan can we start with? Where are we now? But I guess what I'm afraid of is that we're going to have a hodgepodge and it would be great to have recommendations that are focused on what we have already and then how we can actually take action, what's the next step to taking action and narrowing down those options.
Any other, I'm going to circle back to the vice mayor eventually, but if there's other questions or comments that we want to, Councilmember Hamilton, please.
I think, I think Michael raised his hand first.
I apologize. Thank you. Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Very polite of you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to concur. I agree with what Councilmember Mason said around keeping it focused. We definitely don't want to come back with a laundry list of things that we can't deliver on because I don't think that would be productive. So definitely having our anchor point be the plans we've already approved and sort of building on that and getting the feedback from the community, I think would be a good approach to doing this and definitely would help with the success of this effort. And then one of the bullet items that kind of jumped out at me that I think may be problematic is assisting businesses with grant applications. And my only concern there would be that if we as a city get in the business of doing that and grants don't go through, do we create a liability for ourselves in that we were not successful in doing that? And I know it's, we did some efforts around getting the applications out, but I think if we step into the role of, you know, actually working with them to fill out applications and telling them what they need to put on those applications kind of I think might put us in a precarious situation. And then being that the council is also approving funds for some of these grants, does that sort of put us at odds where we're working with some and not others to fund those grants? So I'm sure there's, there might be a way to, you know, make that above board and clear. But I think just on the surface, it looks to me a little risky.
Councilmember Hamilton.
So actually, I'll go ahead and start with what Councilmember Salazar just brought up regarding assist businesses with grant applications. I kind of agree, but maybe it would be, maybe that could be changed to be more in line with what we've already done as a council, which would be inform businesses of grant opportunities and you know, that sort of thing. I think that would be well within the purview. But my, my overall comment cautioning against narrowing is that one of the main goals is to go out into the community and find out, go out into the business community and find out what the problems are because we don't know everything. And we should never assume that we do know everything. You know, we're not, none of us is running a business, a small business in San Bruno and facing the challenges that our business owners are facing. And if we put a too narrow of a scope on this committee and then we go out to solicit feedback from folks and they say, well, I'm having a problem with X, the last thing we want to do is say, that's not in scope, so we're not going to answer you about that. Because I think that's going to send the wrong message. I do agree that we don't want to just have, just come back with a hodgepodge of requests that we can't deliver on. Because, so you know, it's going to be up to the members of the subcommittee to be, to be open and honest with folks as we're, as they're, as we're communicating and about, you know, the process for things and how, you know, and what can, what could be reasonably delivered and all those sorts of things. The most important thing here is that we, is that we recognize that the majority of what is going to, what should happen with this committee is connecting business owners with the right services that are already being offered by the city to make sure that they're being, that the business community is taking full advantage of what is available to them. Because right now they're not. And if there are requests that come through that are not, you know, things that aren't here or that aren't available or requests for specific things to be done downtown or elsewhere that aren't, that have not been budgeted or whatever, that those types of things, we would not send to the city manager. We would not contact staff. Those would go, those would have to be brought back to the full council for a recommendation on either we don't do anything or we, if we want to put it on a strategic initiative for a future year and or if it's something that's more urgent and we want to, we want to provide staff direction on that, then what are we going to take off to make room for it? You know, the standard process that we follow for anything. So those are my, those are my. So those are my, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, no, 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 of course. And, and, and this, this session is, is truly appreciated. Um, and these were bulleted items that I put together for two weeks ago and we didn't really talk about it in detail because we didn't have the opportunity until now. Um, I have no problem providing additional focus to the street, uh, streetscape project, project, the items that are in there. However, it's also important to note that our city manager has already told us, you know, that they are working on what they're working on and we already are having difficulty, um, or maybe just rephrase it. Staff is already working on too many, too many things, but of, of an additional focus on streetscape and a survey to kind of find out, um, what our business owners would prefer or our community prefers, that's fine. The grants, um, absolutely right. Um, but the, 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 the problem, I think with grants, you know, our business owners are so busy and they get, you know, a packet of, you know, information from, uh, whether it be from, um, from us when we delivered them. They need a little bit more help and, and that encouragement. And, and it was like today I went to my barber and it was like, you haven't applied for anything yet. And he goes like, I know I've, I've been, I was closed for so long. And I said, you need to apply and, and I'll get you a copy of the application. Um, as well as my, my dry cleaner, the same thing. Um, she didn't, uh, she didn't apply and she just needs a little more encouragement because they haven't received anything yet. Um, so I, I appreciate those and, and I understand that as we come back, we'll be able to provide, um, the committee will be able to provide and probably the most important thing is what does our business community think and need and hearing from them directly. And we currently don't have an effective way of communicating with our business community. So, um, well noted. However, somebody wants wordsmith, you may have that, that I'm absolutely fine with it. But thank you.
The City Manager.
Sure. Uh, Mayor Medina, Council. Uh, I, I have a few, uh, recommendations and suggestions. Uh, I'm pretty glad that you didn't ask that, uh, uh, for, for that. So I want to, um, um, I don't want to go in front of the council, but I, I, I do have, uh, some thoughts with regard to the goals that are listed, uh, at the appropriate time.
Well, I think most council has had an opportunity to speak. I, I'd like to hear, uh, at this time if that's okay, uh, from staff's thoughts and perspective.
Sure. Uh, with specific regard to bullet four, assist businesses with grant applications, uh, both at the last council meeting and this council meeting, uh, it's been expressed in many different ways. I think one concern is that, um, a council member assisting a business with a grant application, uh, when the money may have been provided by the city, uh, may cause a conflict, right? We just provided a hundred and twelve thousand to the, um, um, uh, Bay Area Entrepreneurship Center. Uh, and it, uh, there, 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 there may be, um, sort of fairness and equity issues that, that may come about if, uh, council members are assisting businesses with, uh, completing grant applications that the city funded. And so instead, uh, I think that sort of rephrasing it as, uh, providing resources or information on grants versus assisting with the grant applications may be more, um, uh, uh, appropriate in this sense. That similarly with, um, the fifth bullet, I think it's important that this ad hoc committee, which is an ad hoc typically meant to be limited in duration and scope, is not seen as a new entity that businesses go to for resources or to, uh, but it is instead seen as what council members are, which are a conduit of information, um, uh, soliciting feedback and ultimately reporting back to the city council on that feedback and information with regard to are there policy objectives that, um, have been revealed through the information that you heard that you would like to provide to your colleagues of the city council? Uh, and, and so I would just encourage the city council not to establish the ad hoc committee as almost an entity that will be the resource or find, so, or, or, or providing answers, but, but instead being a conduit, which, which, um, politicians often are. Uh, I think third comment is there, I know that there's been talk, not so much today, but the last time this was discussed about the Chamber of Commerce and wanting a more robust Chamber of Commerce. Um, but I think realizing that an ad hoc committee, committee is typically limited in scope, limited in duration, partnering with those agencies to maybe enhance their presence downtown. So they can be that entity that will be that lasting resource for businesses or potentially even, uh, talking to businesses and seeing if there's interest in a downtown business association that has a specific focus on downtown, you know, coalescing thoughts around there. And then with regard to surveys, I think there's a lot of, um, of surveys that will be planned uh, that the, uh, committee can help, uh, push out, uh, certainly over the next six months. Uh, there, there's at least one active survey now, um, and probably will be five or six that will come up, uh, whether it's ballot initiatives, whether it is, uh, policy things that, that the city council will service that may have an impact on downtown. Uh, and so those, um, uh, can, can be, uh, talked about. Uh, and lastly, with regard to developing a resource guide, um, if this is a limited entity, a question is should the, should the ad hoc committee be the ones to develop the resource guide? Or should they work with other groups, like maybe the chamber to develop that resource guide? So it's a, a lasting document, um, not just something that's developed for a, a point in time. That's it.
Thank you, City Manager. That was helpful. Uh, Councilmember Hamilton.
Uh, I agree. That was very, very helpful. Thank you, City Manager. Um, the one thing that I left off of my, of my comment, um, uh, was, uh, related to the Chamber of Commerce and, uh, Councilmember Mason's, um, comment about that. And I do think it would be appropriate for the, the members of this ad hoc committee to, uh, attend the, um, the chambers meetings and, and be, and become engaged with, with, with them even beyond those, you know, hopefully well beyond those meetings. Um, and then because the ad hoc committee is limited in duration, perhaps once the, once the ad hoc committee is disbanded, maybe, um, council would agree to always have, you know, rotating two members attend on an ongoing basis. But that's something we can, we can talk about in the future. But, um, I would be fine with adding that as a, as a goal here as well. You know, something, you know, specifically like when we talk about improved communication with our business community and the Chamber of Commerce. You know, part, or, or partnering, or have a separate bullet for partner with the Chamber of Commerce or whatever. That's it. Thank you.
So, uh, on, on the chamber, uh, you know, I'm going to say what I said last time a little bit too, is that they do have a board of directors. So to say, we are coming to your meeting and we are now going to be participating going forward, um, even in a advisory capacity or whatever, the term may be. I think, uh, uh, an ad hoc committee to go and introduce themselves to kind of talk and edge, uh, update and have them understand from the, the same page, I think is, is helpful. Keep it in mind, we do have a city employee, uh, a, a director that's on the board. And so that I think puts it a little unique, um, uh, on that. I think I also want to go back in history way before my time on the council. But when they started to look at a business guide, the back, way back when, uh, it was like, okay, well, we need resources and we need city money. So I, I think we need to be conscientious about what that could mean and how it could be interpreted. Um, but I think trying to promote the businesses and the communication, there's nothing wrong with that. Uh, City Manager talked about some of the surveys, um, that could be helpful on the, um, assist the grant applications. I think with Councilmember Hamilton had mentioned about the inform, I think it was your council member, um, and, um, City Manager, I think are, are accurate. Um, I do agree with Councilmember, uh, Mason that we do have stuff that maybe folks need to, you know, maybe they just don't even remember what is streetscape plans, what really, what was the vision? So trying to educate and say, hey, there are things, um, folks do know that, you know, we've talked about Centennial Park. We're going to have another thing on a study session. So these are things too that are already in, in the works. And I do kind of concern if we come back and bring so much or if it's brought back and then it's like setting the expectations for success, not for, uh, uh, you know, under delivering and, and over promising. So I think those are the kind of things just, um, we want to be conscientious about. Um, any other final comments, um, on the downtown improvement ad hoc committee? Uh, Vice Mayor?
Yeah. And, and, uh, I'd like to thank the City Manager for, for the additional comments about the chamber. Um, and that's fine to kind of have an additional bullet point. The chamber is part of our business community, but, um, that's fine. I wasn't, I specifically didn't put in the business improvement district, um, because that's a big monster of its own and, and the amount of time to do it. But if, uh, if that's what it takes to go ahead and get this committee, uh, done, I, I'll be happy to try to start at least a communication on that. Um, and, um, I, I appreciate all the comments and, and I, I, I'm really looking forward to this. So, so however we need to revise and wordsmith, I'm, I'm fine with that. I think the overall goal here is, 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 is bridging and, and improving communication. I, I, I think that just is missing. Um, so, um, thank you.
Yeah. And I don't think anyone's saying you need to have a downtown, um, district or something. I think it's just, could it ever evolve into that? Or do, do you have folks that want to take that on as they used to have, um, uh, many moons ago? But, um, you know, uh, maybe times are different and, and it's got to be a, a different element. Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, no, I, I just, um, I, I just want to thank, uh, Vice Mayor Medina for bringing this up. I think he's been a huge champion for downtown. Um, and hopefully we hear recommendations of next steps and what has been waiting. Um, I just get concerned that we're going to bring forth something new and we have so much waiting. Um, and I do want to say, I don't think that we would just, I don't think we would, or anybody here would just show up to a chamber meeting. And I think there's an understanding that there's a, a board that we have to talk to and, um, invite ourselves to the party. Um, but I still think that it's important. Other cities have done it and I, I just spoke with another city and, and they do it to ensure that there's a connection between the council and the business community and that the business community knows that the council cares and wants to see their businesses thrive. So, um, thank you.
Thank you. Um, and, and again, I will, I always like, will like to not duplicate. So i- if going in the future after this, you know, the ad hoc, because the ad hoc is going to dissolve at some point, um, you know, then maybe, maybe we don't need a, somebody on the senior leadership team to be a board member. So I, I think, you know, um, we need to utilize our, our resources, uh, and so, and not duplicate. Um, with that said, I think we've heard about some of the, um, modifications and trying to keep us on, on point. Um, and City Manager, again, your comments were very helpful. Thank you. And so with that said, I'm, you know, if we're, we're ready to move on, uh, I'm going to recommend that, um, I think the Vice Mayor might want to serve on it, just a feeling I got.
Thank you for that.
Yes, I know. The Vice Mayor, uh, Medina and, uh, if it's, uh, and then Councilmember Hamilton, if both are willing, able and have the time. Okay. Like nominations. Um, okay. Uh, with that, um, so unless there's any objection, then I would, uh, to having, uh, Vice Mayor Medina and Councilmember Hamilton serve on the downtown ad hoc committee. Is there any objections from any council members or any other suggestions of other persons to serve on that? Okay. So I'm going to say that, um, it is a five oh to appoint, um, Mr. Medina and Mr. Hamilton to that. Um, and I expect you, what, you'll be, uh, downtown tomorrow at what, eight AM? Ready to go? Okay. With that said, um, thank you. And what we're going to do is, uh, why don't we go ahead and take a five, six minute break if we could? And then we will continue on with our study session.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Andres. By now. That was what they predicted at the beginning of the season. They were very wrong.
Staff, are we, uh, ready to reconvene?
Ready, uh, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, we'll, we will come out of recess, uh, and come back to our council meeting, uh, for September the fourteenth. We have just concluded the conduct of business and we will move on to item seven, study session. First item, receive report and provide direction regarding proposed standards for fencing and screening of construction sites and construction, storage slash staging areas. Pretty many.
Sure. Thank you, uh, Mayor, and the city council. Um, the item that is before you, uh, is discussing proposed standards for fencing and screening at construction sites. And I, I think, uh, members of the public and certainly members of the council have seen the various staging areas, uh, around our, our community. Uh, and they're, they're frankly in various stages of, uh, of aesthetics. Uh, some have well maintained constructions at St., uh, others don't. And, uh, the leaves and the fences sometimes are patterned and the reasons are many. Uh, we'll talk about that. We know that it is a concern of the council and of the community. Uh, and, and while we try to address the one-off situations, uh, this is a problem that really deserves a systematic approach and a systematic relook on how, um, they, they, on, on what our requirements are. Uh, and so the presentation tonight, uh, will be provided by, uh, Mike Bacalden. Uh, Mike Bacalden is a, uh, expert consultant with the Municipal Resource Group. Um, he is assisting the city, uh, while, uh, we have a interim public works director. Uh, he, he's undertaken a number of tasks for the center, for, for the city. Uh, chief among them is conducting a formal assessment of the public works department. As a city council knows, that is a effort that we've undertaken, undertaken, uh, just about every time that we've had a department director transition so the new director can walk in, uh, with a, an outside third party evaluation and some recommendations. But he's also been assisting staff and, and taken on, uh, individual, uh, projects. This being one of them, I asked Mike to take a look at our, uh, practices and policies around, uh, construction, uh, fencing and lay down yards and provide some recommendations. And so Mike is with us tonight. He's prepared, uh, the materials that are before you. And so, uh, with that, uh, why don't I turn it over to Mike? I invited him to present tonight. I did not tell him that it would be nearly 10 o'clock when he went on. Um, uh, but, uh, he, he is here and I know has been waiting. Uh, and so can we bring Mike in as a panelist? Uh, it looks like he's entering right now. Uh, and there's a PowerPoint that he will share with the city council. Hi, Mike.
Uh, good evening.
Uh, and I'm sorry, before Mike goes, I, I forgot to say your resume. Uh, Mike has nearly 30 years of experience, uh, in both the public and private sector. He was the public works director for the city of San Leandro for eight years, uh, as well as, uh, the deputy general manager and the interim general manager for the DL, for the Del Monte Diablo's sanitation district. So he comes to, to us when they welcome public works and, uh, with a killer experience.
Great. Am I on? Perfect. Well, good evening, uh, Mayor, City Council. The pleasure to be in front of you tonight, uh, regardless of the hour. So, uh, Javon gave a great introduction, so I think I'm going to jump right into the presentation. So the objective of, of the review was to, really the bottom line is to minimize the visual impacts of construction projects on the community. That, that's the overarching objective of, of any kind of fencing and screening standards. As part of the analysis, uh, the goal was to really strengthen and standardize the city's existing standards for fencing. And, and originally the, the task was to look at offsite staging areas. But as part of the analysis, we decided that, you know, why limit it to offsite staging areas? Why have a great looking fence for an offsite staging area and then have a? kind of construction site, whether it be onsite storage, offsite storage, and, and for the construction site itself. And then part of the review is also to look at the actual process for the review and approval of construction sites, and most, most importantly, the oversight. Because, you know, no matter what standards you have, if, if the standards are not being enforced or overseen, then it, it doesn't really matter what kind of standards that you adopt. So as a background, the city currently regulates construction sites and staging areas through, through actually several mechanisms. Uh, the first is, is for the city's capital projects. The, the city staff, the engineering staff prepare specifications for, for the city-run projects. So that's one place where there's an ability to enter in standards for projects in terms of site conditions, screening and fencing. Uh, the next is also in an engineering department. It's for, uh, encroachment permit. It's, and there's standard conditions for encroachment permits for work in the right-of-way. And that's typically work performed by the utilities. But it can also be for other types of private contractors. It's like plumbers doing work in the street, things like that. The next, uh, approval is, is a, hand, conditions of approval, uh, through the planning department, you know, as part of the entitlement process or someone coming in through some kind of a planning zoning approval. And the, the last kind of mechanism is a building permit. So pretty much any type of building construction project's gonna have to go through the city, uh, and obtain a building permit. So they may not have to go through Public Works, they may not need encroachment permit, they may not need to go through planning for, for conditions of approval, but, you know, virtually every construction project will at least go through the building department and obtain a building permit. And then the city has actually a fairly unique requirement. Um, it's in the zoning code, it says that any off-site temporary storage, uh, construction staging areas need to obtain a temporary use permit from the planning commission. So the review process consisted of, of, of several steps, but the first one was that the, there were, the first finding was sort of speak of the city does not have consistent and detailed standards for staging area and construction site, temporary fencing and screening. And, and the reason it's not consistent is that the planning department's conditions of approval may not mesh it with exactly what the engineering department puts in their specifications, which may not match what the building department puts into their standard conditions of approval for building permits. So the idea is that we ended up with uniform language for any construction project, no matter how it was permitted or approved, whether it be through planning, through building or through engineering. The staff performed an internet search, so you could, you could say it was an international search for standards, and reached out also to neighboring cities in, in San Mateo County to determine best practices and to obtain model language. So in terms of findings, uh, many cities identify potential staging areas for public works projects prior to bid, and not only for public works projects, but even for private developers. Uh, good examples in, in your area, uh, would, would be, uh, the City of Millbrae and the City of Burlingame. They both have somewhat remote city-owned property, you know, along the bay shore. Uh, one is along a, close to a golf course, another one is, is close to a, a water treatment plant. And so they're really out-of-the-way locations where they're able to provide contractors, whether it be for a city project or for private development, the ability to store materials in an out-of-the-way location that isn't really in the public eye. So that, that's a key advantage of, of some cities or that, that have those types of city-owned properties where they can, they can have contractors store things, uh, out of, out of sight. And then a few agencies, uh, actually have fairly detailed fencing and screening specifications and requirements for construction sites, but not really for off-site staging areas. We were not able to find really sites or specif- specifications for off-site staging areas. Really, all the fencing requirements really applied to construction sites. And the vast majority of cities really had very general, generic kind of, you know, make, put up a fence, put up screening and make it look pretty. There wasn't much specific language, whereas a few agencies had very specific standards for the type of fence and the type of screening, you know, the nu- you know, the number of attachment points, you know? You know, can the attachment points be visible from the street? So we actually were able to find some fairly good model language to, uh, to, to borrow And last, really, one of the key findings was that the city's requirement for temporary use permit via the planning commission is highly unusual. And, uh, and really what, what it does, what for the city is that it, it, it potentially creates significant delays, costs and inefficiencies in the process because to go through the planning commission, it's, it's at best a two-month process, everything goes perfectly, whereas more realistically, it's probably closer to three-month process, which in some cases can exceed the actual, the length, uh, of time that the actual construction will be ongoing. Uh, so the, the actual process for just approving an off-site construction staging area may take longer than the construction, uh, project itself. What the staff found is really, the city does have effective existing mechanisms to regulate both public and private construction projects in the right-of-way and on public and private property. So what are the proposed standards? Uh, in this particular slide, we're gonna highlight, you know, some of the, the key findings or the key of standards. It's not, uh, a complete listing of all the standards, but what we believe are the most significant ones and, and the ones that will provide the most improvement to appearance of construction site and staging area, uh, fencing and screening. So for projects in the public right-of-way, um, the, the issue in the past has been that if, if the construct, if a contractor was storing things like, uh, pipe and, and for like a sewer or, or a pipeline project for, for a water system, and they were storing it, uh, on the street, the problem was that if they, they stored it for weeks or months on end, same location, it became a public nuisance and they were storing it in the same location, causing a nuisance for, again, for the, the people immediately in the immediate, uh, adjacent area of the actual staging area. So a standard that we found that existed both in Millbrae and the City of Los Altos was to limit the actual storage in the public right-of-way to, to the work week. In other words, you bring just enough material to complete the work for, for given work week, and then as I, at the end of day Friday, you move the materials off-site. So there's really no storage over the week. And then as the work progresses, you actually, the following week, you would move the staging area, you know, up the block or down to the next street. So you're constantly moving the staging area, so you're not parked in front of the same house or storing materials in front of the same house or the same group of houses, week in, week out. And then part of the new standard would be that any debris or loose material would have to be cleaned up at the end of each workday. For projects on public or private property, the construction site and staging area would be secu- secured by chain-linked fence with bottom and top rail. And, and the key standard there is a top rail because without a top rail, the, the fence tends to sag and then so does any kind of screening material. So that would be an additional standard to ensure the presence of a top rail. And then more importantly, when adjacent to a public right-of-way, the fence must have screening that is maintained in a taut condition, no rifts or tears greater than two inches. So it provides a specific standard that a contractor has to follow in terms of the condition of the fence. And in other words, it has to be taut and it can't have rifts and tears and gaps that are greater than two inches. If there are tears or gaps greater than two inches, then either they have to repair or replace it within forty-eight hours. And thi- this, the, the next condition is actually, uh, borrowed from Beverly Hills of all places, which is where, where possible, the fence is to be set back two feet from the sidewalk. And that is to allow a little bit more elbow room, uh, when there's a project right up the sidewalk. Uh, so it's kind of an aesthetic thing, but also it allows more pedestrian access around the construction sites, where it's not jammed up against, right up against the sidewalk. And then all areas visible from the public right-of-way are to be maintained free of weeds and litter. And so this is just a stock photo showing what a construction or staging area fence, you know, would look like under that standard where you would have a fence with a bottom top rail, the material would be, you know, in, in good, clean condition and then also maintained taut. So you wouldn't have the, the material flapping around, you wouldn't have the, the big gaps from sagging at the top of, of, of the fence. So an additional standard for just the construction sites, not the staging areas, would be to have a sign on the fencing that provides a name and emergency contact information for the general contractor. And the sign letting would be, have to be large enough to be read from ten feet away and the sign would not be allowed to extend beyond the top of the fence. Then the actual sign language and graphics would have to be pre-approved by city staff. Sorry for that. Now, the key to implementing these new standards really is to train engineering, planning, building and code enforcement staff for the new standards. Because the city does have existing standards now for cleanliness on construction sites. They're very generic, they don't provide a lot of detail, but, you know, you know, generally on a public works project, there will be some kind of language about maintaining a storage area or the construction site in a clean and ordinary sta- in a, in an orderly state. And then the building code and also, um, the, uh, encroachment permit standard conditions, you know, talk about, you know, a, a clean site. So the idea here is to train all sites, uh, to be more, uh, aware of, of the need and the desire to maintain the outside of any construction site as well as off-site staging area in a clean and orderly fashion and to, you know, pay close attention to the fencing and the screening to ensure that it's not allowed to deteriorate over the life of the project. And then also, one of the efforts that staff is currently doing is to continue to search for appropriate staging areas that are, that could be made available to contractors that are in a less visible area. You know, so currently, one of the staging areas is on the corner of San Bruno and, uh, Huntington Avenue. So it's, it's a pretty visible area. Uh, you know, it's probably not an ideal location for construction site staging, so, you know, trying to find, uh, good locations that are, you know, more out of sight, uh, in a more remote location where there won't be as much of a visual impact in, in a busy corridor. Um, that's really the goal. So the staff is, is identifying sites and trying to, you know, see if we can, uh, obtain or at least get approval to, to use these sites for these types of projects. So the request to the City Council, and, and really is to direct staff to add the proposed construction fencing and screening standards to the city's construction specifications, conditions of approval and encroachment and building permit conditions. And that's something that staff can, can do pretty much im- immediately. Um, you know, the, the, a lot of those conditions are staff-driven or staff-derived anyways, so that's, that those, those conditions can be added pretty much, you know, at the staff's discretion at any time. Uh, the main action that, uh, staff is asking, uh, the council to take is to prepare a zoning code or a zoning ordinance amendment that revises the section twelve point eight, four point oh three oh of the municipal, municipal code to remove all references to off-site construction staging areas. And staff would bring that particular amendment before the planning commission, followed by the City Council. And with that, that's the end of the presentation, and, um, staff is available to answer any questions.
Great. And thank you very much, uh, for your patience and staying with us into the evening, and thank you for your, uh, the very detail and, and the research that you've done for this. Uh, with that, I'm gonna open it to, first to council for questions on the presentation, please. And, uh, considering I wanna be mindful of the hour too, if we can try to get them all, maybe we can do a circle around the, uh, around for each other, then I wanna open it to the public, bring it back to the council for, uh, questions on the presentation. Okay, questions on the presentation, Vice Mayor? And then Councilmember Hamilton.
Sure. Um, thank you, thank you, Mike. It's nice to put in a face to a voice. Um, I thank City Manager for putting this in contact, uh, when, when I first started bringing this up to staff's attention about, uh, the problems that we were having with, with, uh, staging areas and, and you said it yourself, the, the, the location at San Bruno Avenue and, and Huntington there i- isn't a good one to have a staging area. Um, but instead of looking back, let's look forward. Um, so I'm okay with most of the things that you presented tonight. Um, my concern is the enforcement of it. Um, the city has always been able to enforce numerous, uh, contract provisions on cleanliness and, um, if, if, if I'm gonna approve what is here tonight, I need to see more teeth in, in the enforcement a- aspect. So, um, I know this is a study session, um, so I'm concerned about removing zoning of, 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 and maybe I don't understand this fully, of how to allow the use of a property as a, as a, a lay-down yard. Um, that, that is a pretty substant- substantial thing to do when somebody lives next door to it. And, and it, in a residential area or next door to a residential area, it, it doesn't seem appropriate and it should go through a special process, which was primarily why I had an issue with the, the location there at, um, San Bruno Avenue. Um, I would also suggest that a, a, an inspection checklist be generated so that the, um, person who is reviewing and inspecting the site has something to provide in writing to the, um, person who is managing the construction site. Um, as for locations where, um, a lay-down yard could be used, um, or staging areas, um, Caltrain property currently is using an area as a, a lay-down yard, um, there on Huntington. If staff can also ask Caltrain to the south of their lay-down yard, there is ample space. Um, and, um, perhaps that space could be approved to, um, be a lay-down yard with Caltrain's permission, uh, cause currently Caltrain, I believe, allows the city to, to have their own little lay-down yard with all the construction debris and, and base rock and, and, uh, there across from the, uh, corp yard there on Huntington, near San Felipe. Um, so I do have, uh, an objection to, I need some more clarity, um, on our requirements on leaving construction materials on the street. Um, five days could be a lot of material. Um, if, if, if a contractor decides to dump a lot of base rock all along the street, five days worth, um, I'd, I'd like to see that tightened up a little bit. And if we're really gonna put down that the contractor's gonna clean every day at the end of the workday, then you need to spell that out by how, um, you need to spell that out. Is it gonna be a street sweeper that's gonna come by? Um, so, uh, I like the, I like the way that overall this, this, uh, this is going, but I, I need to see a little more detail in it and, uh, I think for the presentation.
Councilmember Hamilton.
So, um, like the Vice Mayor, most of my concerns had to do with enforcement, so I'll, I'll try not to repeat, um, uh, anything that the Marry has already said. The, so I, I, I have, I have a, I have a concern about the enforcement piece of it, um, because as was mentioned, we have standards today, um, and, and they're, they're not as clearly spelled out as, as they are here and, and in, in this proposal, and I'm glad, I'm glad for this proposal. Um, but I don't believe that, that, you know, there are clearly areas of, of the, of the, of the city that aren't, that are below even the current standards. So I'm really, I'm really concerned about the, about the enforcement piece. Um, so like, for example, like, just bringing out an, an example out of the presentation, torn or ripped screening, screening must be replaced within forty-eight hours. How is that measured? Does that mean that somebody is going around daily to look at all the fences to make sure they all look good? Is it going around weekly? Or is the assumption that in the course of regular work, the inspectors would be, would, would, would spot them? In which case, if regular work doesn't happen to take them into a particular area, then maybe the, the screening has gotta be ripped for, for, um, well beyond forty-eight hours. So those, those types of things, um, that, that I like to see, see tightened up within here and, and spelled out a little bit better because... Because, you know, we, and, and, you know, and I know that a lot of it has to do with, with staffing shortages and whatnot. But, you know, the enforcement piece often has fallen, fallen down. And we need to make sure that we're, it would be a waste. And it was probably, and Mike, you said at the beginning of the presentation, you know, the standards are no good unless you enforce them. So that's my, my biggest concern here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also agree that enforcement is a huge piece of this. But I don't think it's, it's a total waste to, you know, to have these regulations in place. And staffing is definitely an issue when it comes to enforcement across the board, and it will be difficult. But I believe if we are very clear and we spell out what our expectations are, and if we have penalties that help sort of drive the point home, it's definitely better than not having anything at all in place. Hopefully, we will have at some point enough staff to go out and do the inspections and make sure that, you know, that people are adhering to it. But, you know, oftentimes, just the threat of a fine is enough to, it gets at least some, some of the actors out there to not be bad actors and to comply. So I think this is definitely a good step in the right direction in establishing something that we can communicate to the construction community and make sure that they understand that we, we do have standards, that we are looking at these things, and that, you know, they, there could be potential fines if they, they don't comply.
Great. Seeing no other hands up by council members, I'll just say one or two comments, and we will go to public. So if the members of the public wish to speak, if you could raise your hand now. I think expectations need to be, some of this has been said, but the expectations that need to be spelt out and clear, enforcement also. So I've heard from four of us now, that enforcement is a concern. And I think penalties also, it's not to be punitive, but at the same time, I think sometimes that gets the attention and the motivation. There are areas that I am even the Vice Mayor have walked, but I mean, you know, the Huntington, the San Bruno Avenue, those areas are things that I know we need to move forward, but we need to put in place the standards. And I do appreciate the detail of the report, as well as looking into the nearby and beyond that. So with that, why don't we move to public, members of the public? And city clerk, if you could bring in our speakers?
Yes, Tim O'Brien?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Good evening, everyone. I have experienced this firsthand, you know, the construction site when they were doing the water sewer replacement and pavement of our neighborhood. And, yeah, this is a great idea. I mean, I wish it was, this was brought up a year ago or so. But anyway, I like the outcome of, you know, the job completed. The streets look great, the water's looking good, working good, sewers are working good. Anyway, so, yeah, I think the construction companies need to be accountable for keeping their areas clean. I mean, they, I mean, I've called, I've been the inspector in my, I was the inspector in my neighborhood. I mean, I was calling the number on the A-frame signs, and they responded, but, you know, they, they just need to be held accountable to clean up their area. They leave signs up, you know, where they're not going to be doing construction. And, you know, you know, parking is, is, is very valuable. And it takes up, you know, those parking spaces, and it impacts the neighborhood. So if they don't remove the signs, you know, like they should, you know, and they, they fall down, and, you know, it just leaves a bad image, you know, in the neighborhood. I just don't like it. I mean, nobody likes it. So, but, yeah, if somebody could, I know the staff is challenged, but, you know, somebody needs to oversee these construction companies when they're done the day at five o'clock or so or four o'clock, and just make them accountable. You know, I've seen, like I said, porta potties left in neighborhoods next to somebody's house. That is, to me, that's very unacceptable. I mean, who knows, that could tip over or, I'm sure it smells. I mean, I'm not sure how they're serviced, but anyway. But this is a great idea. I hope it gets enforced well. I don't know who's going to enforce it. I'd like to know who's going to enforce it, because I know staff is challenged, the police department is code enforcement, and they're, they're way understaffed, and they have so many things to handle. I mean, keeping our city safe is a challenge already. If this is going to be another thing on their plate, I think it's going to be, it's going to really spread them out thin. I appreciate all the work the staff's done in putting this presentation together. And I like to see the results. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you for your comments. Seeing no other hands up, we will then bring it back to council. Public comment time is done. Is there any, again, this is for direction, this is not an adoption. You've seen the report, I believe, between Mike and, or I'm sure the city manager, in regards to some of the items that have been brought up, I don't know if that gives you enough direction or if you need a little more clarity on anything specific. Please, Mike?
Well, I just wanted to bring up a couple of issues and maybe offer some perspective. So there's, I've heard two things. One was kind of a reticence to change the zoning code. And the other issue that was mentioned by pretty much every council member was enforcement. So in terms of the zoning code amendment, you know, the reason that staff is requesting that be modified is that, I mean, really, San Bruno is the only municipality that, that we could find that really has that kind of a requirement. And because it's a discretionary approval, I mean, the way, the way to look at it is, imagine that a contractor wins a bid, whether it be a city project or private development. And he's, and they say, you know, he gets a notice to proceed, it gives him the thirty-six days to start. So in that window, the contractor has to file an application with the city's zoning board for approval, in which the process may actually take longer than, than the time they have to start construction. And then because it's a discretionary process, there's a possibility that the, that, you know, the zoning board says no. And then are we, so the problem becomes then, does the contractor now have to restart a two to three month process or take weeks or months to find a new location and then go through the similar two to three month process to find a different location? So that's, that's the kind of the practical difficulty with having a contractor who's, you know, primary function is building something and making them go through an administrative or process where they have to get approval for something that's ancillary to their primary mission, which is to construct something. And that's why staff is suggesting that we create these internal standards where staff can use its discretion and judgment to approve locations and set the standards that meet the city, the councils, as well as the public's needs in terms of, you know, protecting views and keeping things looking neat. And keep in mind that the standards that are being proposed today, I mean, they can be updated at any time, because we're not asking to adopt them as part of the municipal code or the zoning code. So they're going to be administrative conditions that will be added to every permit and every condition of approval that goes after related to construction, storage areas, and construction sites. And so really, if it's a matter of adding, saying, hey, this isn't working well, or we're not, you know, we're concerned about this, you know, maybe we need to be more specific on that, staff can do that at really at any time, add additional requirements, add additional specifications that clarify issues. So it's kind of a living thing that can be amended and, and improved at any point in time in the future. Now, and on the enforcement issue, I just wanted to offer the following, is that, you know, construction is a little bit different than your standard kind of enforcement. You know, when a police officer talks about enforcement, it's sort of a one-time incident, right? They pull someone over, it's a five to 10 minute interaction. Code enforcement goes out typically, you know, they'll say, cut your weeds, and it's kind of a one-time situation. Construction is more of a relationship, right? It's an ongoing process where inspector typically works with the same contractors over and over again, whether they be a city contractor working on a capital project, or whether it be a contractor, a plumber, let's say, who's constantly doing jobs in San Bruno. So it's someone they may run into on an ongoing basis throughout the year. So in terms of enforcement, it really becomes a relationship issue. It's, it's making the contractor aware of the city's priorities. And so typically, on a construction project, let's say, in talking with staff, if you have a city project, you would have a pre-construction meeting, and that would be the opportunity for the city staff, the project manager, the inspector to say, hey, look, the city is reemphasizing and putting a highlight and spotlight on, on, on site conditions, on housekeeping, you know, here's our new standards on fencing. So they have an opportunity at the beginning of each project to make sure that the contractor is aware that there's a heightened sensitivity and heightened awareness of site conditions. And then throughout the project, they can reinforce that. So that's really the primary goal and the primary method of getting contractors that, you know, work in the city and do work in the city to understand that it's become a higher priority. And even for encroachment permits, the city staff, the city inspectors tend to have pre-construction meetings, whether it be with the PG&E or, or again, you know, a smaller contractor doing work in the city. So there's an opportunity at the beginning of every project to, to educate and to sort of get, get buy-in from the contractors to, to meet the city's new expectations and standards when it comes to housekeeping.
Thank you. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I just want to add on to what Mike McCall did mention. By saying the recommendation to remove the requirement to go to the planning commission is also a balance between having reasonable standards that are appropriate for the aesthetics of the community that we want, but that are also, that don't put additional illnesses on development contractors where we hear so often that the requirements in doing business in San Bruno is harder in other cities, right? And so it's striking that balance between having the requirements and the practices and the, and the procedures to have the aesthetics we want, but not making it harder to do business here than it is elsewhere. And you guys hear that frankly, probably just as much as me or more. And with regard to the, will there be additional training of staff? Absolutely. I mean, we are proffering this new system, and that comes with sort of a reification of our staff, creating those consistent patterns, and as Mike mentioned, those pre-construction or pre-enforcement meetings where we set that tone and have a heightened focus on this, knowing that it is, it is an interest of the, of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Any final comments from council on this topic? Okay. Seeing none, I think we've given a lot of food for thought, and I appreciate the feedback from our comments by both the, both of you. Thank you, and thank you for the report.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor?
So, for, for, we're talking about striking, and I'm looking it up right now, twelve point eight, four, zero, three, zero temporary uses. Is that what the direction is that this council is agreeing to? Because I'm not.
It would go to the planning commission to ask for a vote. We're not voting on it.
Okay, just wanted to find out what, to be clear, so you're going to take this proposal to the planning commission?
Yeah.
City hall, I mean, city manager, I'm sorry.
Yes, if we have majority of support tonight to move forward with the recommendations, we would then begin the process of implementing those. And as was mentioned in the PowerPoint, yes, it would be to go to the planning commission first and then bring it back to the city council, as well, as well as developing all the other internal standards. But, but if there's not majority support right now to do that, then there's, there's no sense of doing that work to go to the planning commission, if when we get to the city council, there's not support. So we wouldn't need to know that there's at least majority support on the city council to move down that path of drafting the amendments to the municipal code, putting them before the planning commission, and then bringing it to the city council.
Did I answer your question, Vice Mayor?
Sure. I'm, I'm not ready yet to, to get rid of the temporary use. So I'll just share that now, the way it currently is proposed. There's reasons, and San Bruno does a lot of things unique, uniquely, right? So the point of this being to protect residents from a lay down yard next door. And, and it has worked in the past. It takes more work, yes. But it was used to, when, when we were doing all the work in, in the rebuilding in Crestmore, we identify a got to use permit. It's been used many times. And I think that's a really big jump. When we know there's a big construction project which is going to come next as we proceed with our water and sewer, staff can identify where, where that location should be. And the, the past, I don't want to dwell on the past, but what I've seen in the past, it's I'm having a hard time saying yes to this. So I'm sharing that now.
You're, you're saying saying yes to not everything, you're saying yes to this, this item you've run up?
This, this, this one item, and, and we gave some, some feedback to staff. They're going to, this is a study session, so they can go back. I can, I'll be happy to send additional questions as, if need be. But I think this still needs some work. And, and let me tell you, if you're living right next door to it, and, and I can tell you, there was, there was improvement as, during this last phase of the water and the sewer, there was some improvement, but it, it, it was pretty nasty in, in, in some neighborhoods in the past couple of years as we were doing construction. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Other final comments or Councilmember Salazar, thank you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So not, not to, you know, dispute the Vice Mayor's concerns, but, you know, I, I agree that there have been situations where enforcement has become a problem with, with temporary staging areas. But I don't recall ever having vigorous debate about approving a temporary use for them. So the only thing that would change by eliminating that is that it would no longer go before the planning commission and the council to approve it. But I believe that the enforcement of standards, which is where we've seen the problem, would be something that we are, you know, that's what we're trying to address, but I don't think that would be exacerbated or circumvented by, you know, this, this change where the council and the planning commission have to approve that use. So, you know, the, the problem seemed to happen after, not, not because we approved it, but because, you know, construction companies get sloppy. So I, I have less of an issue with, with exploring that path, and I, I think it might be worthwhile if it does help streamline, as the city manager pointed out, a cumbersome project that causes delays to construction.
Other comments from council? Okay. I would, for myself, I kind of echo a little bit of Councilmember Salazar. I think it is, once it's established and it's about enforcement and maintaining those expectations. I don't, I do want to, I don't want to have something hampered, and streamlining is better because, yes, we do hear, it takes a lot to go through processes and the timing and stuff like that. But any other comments from council? So city manager, and is there anything else that you need or you want clarity on from, for direction from this council?
Mr. Mayor, I have one more thing. Sorry, I apologize.
That's fine. Go ahead.
If we're going to be looking at municipal code, allowing, or I don't know if it's allowed, but having toilets... but having uh toilets left by a contractor, they should be removed every day. Um, they they do make them with wheels. They're on a trailer, and um they should be removed every day. They shouldn't be allowed overnight. They shouldn't be allowed over the weekends, which which uh, which shouldn't take that hard to to make that change. But if we're going to do some changes uh related to construction, I think that would be important.
Yes, City Manager?
Yes, so uh I just wanted to make sure that we had um majority council support to to move forward. I believe we do, but I just want to confirm that. Um, but with regard to the uh latest um uh item that Councilmember Medina brought up, um, I think we need to do uh significantly um a additional further research on that. Um, absolutely true, they they do make uh portable toilets on on trailers. Um, my um experiences that cities do allow those uh to be outside of job sites, and it's not just major uh construction companies, that's a requirement for uh for for homeowners uh at times, and I and I I know that sometimes homeowners, uh certainly during COVID nineteen, uh uh had had work done and actually decided to invest in a porta potty uh because um it it avoided having um people uh come into their home. And so um while while, you know, I I know we're thinking of large con- large uh contractors and big projects, but uh it may have an unintended con- consequence if we uh have a blanket rule uh that requires uh porta potties uh for at construction sites to be removed every day. Uh, that that's not
If I can clarify, City Manager Grogan?
Yes.
It's not for like construction sites. This is for when a contractor brings a porta potty. And sometimes they're on wheels, sometimes they put it on the corner. Um, but they're not allowed to be on the corner, and and just need to make sure we specify that. If when you are required, because you are required for motion to to have toilet facilities along the construction site, that it has to be removed every day. So I'll let staff, that's my that's my feedback. Um, you heard it from a resident. There was there was a porta potty that stayed in place for weeks on one of the construction projects. So um, just look into it, please.
So I think what the City Manager has asked is if is there a concurrence, a majority of the council that wants us to proceed? Obviously, they've heard uh some of our comments. Uh, I think Mr. Hamilton voted, I mean, they nodded yes. Thank you. Appreciate it. I, that's one. Are there others? There's two. Mr. Salazar?
So so the record uh will do, uh and we will uh also look into the the issue of um uh toilets um that are uh located at job sites and how that can uh can um how those rules a- apply uniformly to uh construction sites and contractors and homeowners and et cetera.
Well, it's in the public right-of-way is a is a is a is a more defined piece that I'm um interested in. At a construction site, it's they're always required. They're always there. But if you're bringing a toilet and you're going to leave it in front of somebody's house over the weekend, that shouldn't be allowed. You brought it there on wheels, you should remove it every 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 time. So it's it's not, it's not as big as of a request as it sounds like is being understood.
Through the mayor, if
Yes.
If I can help clarify, Marty, I think what you're saying is that portable toilets cannot be left in the public, should not be left in the public right-of-way overnight or on the weekends. And when you talk about removing them, you're not talking about taking them out of San Bruno. You're talking about putting them behind the fence in the construction site. You're on mute.
You're on mute.
I'm sorry. You're absolutely correct.
Okay, because even I didn't understand that.
Okay, I apologize.
No, it's all right.
Okay, thanks.
Could be the hour. Um, thank you, Tom. I mean, thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. Um, okay, um, City Manager, I think you have the direction, and um we can proceed forward to the next study session item. It's item B, receive report for, re- uh, receive report and provide direction regarding the establishment of a parklet program and authorize the City Manager to waive fees until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. City Manager?
Yes. Mayor, City Council, members of the public, Javon Grogan, uh City Manager. Uh, the the mayor has read the item. Uh, tonight's second study session uh is with regard to parklets. Um, a topic that came out of the streetscape plan uh as as well as a topic that has been uh very much ever-present uh during COVID nineteen uh as we temporarily allow sidewalk dining. Uh, in many cities, uh uh developed temporary parklet programs. Uh, South San Francisco being one of them, if you went downtown South San Francisco, you can see a number of temporary uh of parklet, parklets that were allowed. Uh, we did not uh take that step for temporary parklets, given the uniqueness uh of our downtown. And um but but there have been requests, there have been interest in um from council on moving forward with concepts and the concepts in the streetscape plan uh with the um acceptance of outdoor dining, the 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 desire to continue outdoor dining on a more permanent fashion. Uh, staff did uh work on uh the framework of a parklet program uh and wanted to present that to the city council tonight for discussion uh and additional uh direction. Uh, there is um a lot of work to be done, uh should we go forward uh in this direction. Uh, but there is the the significant research and a framework that we would like to discuss with you tonight. Tonight's presentation uh will be presented by Michael Smith, a uh senior planner uh in our uh Community and Economic Development Department. Uh, so Michael has a presentation that he will uh provide to the city council. Oh, Hey Juan Richie, I'm sorry, I'm
Yes, uh, I will be presenting that item tonight.
Perfect.
Screen.
Hey Juan is our interim uh Public Works Director.
Uh, yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Um, I'm Hey Juan Richie, interim Public Works Director. Uh, the item before you tonight is the discussion of the establishment of a parklet program. Um, I will be providing the present- presentation tonight, however I be remiss if I didn't also acknowledge um the other city staff who were close partners in the development of this program. Um, Pamela Wu and Michael Smith from Community and Economic Development Department um were key contributors, along with Ari Delay Engage Slice with Fire, uh Scott Rogie with uh Police, Jennifer Dianos with the City Manager's Office, Donald Zhao with Building Division, and of course, our City Manager. Um, for the planning and design aesthetics, Pamela Wu and Michael Smith are present tonight to answer any questions along with um zoning questions if they if they did come up. So this slide shows the agenda for this presentation. Um, first off, provides some parklet program background information, goals and purpose, um key program restrictions, um location and setback criteria, parklet design elements, policy issues, followed with questions. So as we're all aware, we were um, you know, struck with a worldwide pandemic. Um, what started as a two-week sheltered place to flatten the curve turned into a prolonged shutdown of businesses as we know it. Um, certain industries like grocery stores had to run on supplies with long lines of shortages, and others, um, and their industries like restaurants were hit um particularly hard with restrictions on operations. As part of Executive Order, uh City of San Bruno Executive Order Number twenty dash zero one, the city allowed temporary outdoor dining on public and private property in order to um help uh businesses, restaurant businesses um allow to uh have higher amounts of business. Um, Order Number twenty dash oh two allowed certain fees to be waived for businesses to operate outdoors, occupying sidewalks, public and private parking lots and street parking spaces. As of June of twenty twenty-one, the governor's executive orders that did place a stay-at-home order and the blueprint for a safe economy were terminated. Um, however, businesses were allowed to continue to operate outdoors um until the city managers, until the City Manager Executive Order twenty dash oh two um has been rescinded. And so that has not um occurred yet. And so the purpose of the current outdoor business registration program um was to allow businesses that could not operate indoors to be able to operate outdoors. The program has been successful as it relates to restaurants and activating San Mateo Avenue and providing a more pedestrian friendly environment. The goal and purpose of this evening is to discuss the creation of a parklet program and that will place a temporary outdoor business setup with a longer-term parklet program. This will allow some restaurants the opportunity to retain their outdoor dining beyond the pandemic, activate the downtown by promoting pedestrian environment, generate more foot traffic for downtown businesses by creating um a lively atmosphere around food, uh tend to balance the needs of all users of the street, limit impact from parking, create a consolidated and streamlined permitting process, ensure aesthetically pleasing design that is compatible with the streetscape plan, and provide separation between pedestrians and outdoor dining. Key program restrictions include the following. Um, this is limited to restaurants only, limited to downtown San Mateo Avenue only. Um, private parking spaces cannot be converted for outdoor dining. Um, the staff is proposing currently eliminate the five total parklets in downtown. Um, that will be an item um that we will return to for policy guidance, um along with that no more than two parklets in any one block. Exclusive use by businesses that build a parklet. Um, parklets must be maintained by the business owner, and um these improvements are not permanent. So um, you know, no bolting into the to the um the street or permanent structures. That cannot be at some point removed. But there are various um parklet criteria. Um, first is the locational criteria. Uh, San Mateo Avenue currently is parallel parking, and so um it would be limited to the parallel parking spaces. Most parklets are the length of one or two parking spaces, although the city will consider larger parklets depending on site conditions. A three-foot inner buffer is required when adjacent to another parallel parking space, and a two-foot buffer is required when adjacent to a driveway. Um, corner locations, parklets should be set back with intersections and crosswalks. Setbacks shall be twenty feet for non-signalized intersections and thirty feet from the signalized intersections. Parklets that cannot meet these setback requirements may be considered on a case-by-case basis. For the most part, in downtown San Mateo Avenue, there are curb extensions that provide for the twenty feet. And so um we don't, we don't anticipate that any particular um spot would be precluded from having a parklet. Um, however, I will share additional criteria. Um, other like location criteria include parklets not being able to be constructed over utility access panels, manhole covers, storm drains, or fire hydrant shut-off valves. Um, they need to be readily accessible for maintenance and operations. The parklets must stay within the designated parking stall area and allow for minimum of eleven-foot tra- vehicular travel lane. Fire hydrants shall not be blocked. Clearance of fifteen feet around the hydrant, fifteen feet on each side, shall be maintained. And to access to a fire department connections, um five-foot wide openings shall be provided between every two adjacent parklets or alternative means um approved by the fire code official. So this figure shows a typical setback um criteria. So we have parallel parking spot, and the Ts show the limits of the parking of along the travel lane here. Um, parklet shall have a two-foot minimum setback from the traveling, measuring from the parking striping adjacent to the travel lane. The side setback, um when adjacent to a parking space, shall be three feet. Please note that further discussion um in the presentation, further in the presentation, I'll discuss traffic barriers uh which can reside within these setbacks. Uh, retro reflective posts will be required at the corners, and the length of the parklet will vary depending on the length of the parking stall or um of length of the parking stall. Um, I will note that when adjacent to or curb extension, um there would not be that same setback requirement. The parklet design elements will consist of the key following elements. A platform that allows for parklets to serve as an extension of the sidewalks that meet ADA criteria. Railings that demarcate the exterior of the parklet from the street and surrounding parking spaces. Straight safety precautions to reduce potential for auto-related uh damage. Um, furnishings and fixtures, aesthetic design consideration. So platform design criteria must be constructed from durable materials. All structures must allow for access to public utilities. The platform must be flush and even with sidewalk. Platforms must allow for curb drainage to flow with a threshold for the gutter adjacent to the curb. And so the, there must be a drainage gap along, adjacent to the curb to allow for stormwater to flow. However, access shall be provided um across the platform. Um, that's ADA compliant. Parklet rail design. Edge buffers are required at the street edge. This can take the form of planters, railings, cubing, or some other appropriate barrier. Openings and railings, rails must be, must prevent passage of a four-inch sphere. The height shall not exceed thirty-six inches from the parklet platform floor to the top of the railing. Barriers tall enough to be six inches must use transparent materials like acrylate, plexiglass, plastic film, et cetera, above those thirty-six inches. The barriers should not block the view of conflicting movements of traffic, including pedestrian traffic, nor block the view of traffic control devices such as traffic signals, traffic signs, and other traffic warning devices. All railings and barriers must have reflectors on them such that they are visible at night. Um, roofs, trellises, and shade structures aren't allowed. In consideration of traffic safety, um we are also considering safety as a key aspect of the parklet. Uh, communities vary on this issue. Some parklets are made of plywood, while others use cement carrels as a barrier. In speaking with police, cement carrels are required because they provide the highest level of safety. Some communities have chosen to have or dissipate the carrels to make them more aesthetically pleasing, as shown in the image above. Um, we are taking once, taking once further and requiring carrel to be architecturally screened. Carrel barriers can be an integrated part of the parklet, but slightly concrete barriers don't have to be um at your backdrop. Part plywood and wood framing can be incorporated to make a multifunctional barrier that works to screen the carrel and provide an architecturally pleasing aesthetic. We do want parklets to be consistent with the San Mateo Avenue Streetscape Plan. Though the plan did not specify or include recommendations for parklet design criteria, it represents a general aesthetic that we are striving for in downtown. To that end, we would require review by the Architectural Review Committee to assess design compatibility. Key policy issues. Um, so there are a number of policy issues uh for discussion, which includes, should the, one, should the city pursue a parklet program? Two, should the total number of parklets within downtown be limited to five? Should the total amount of parklets in each block be limited to two? Um, should that be offered on a first-come, first-served basis? And should the city identify target areas for parklets? Should the design go through Architectural Review Committee for review? And should the city provide or seek grants to fund, to cover parklet processing duties and or subsidize construction cost for parklets? Uh, many communities have waived fees for the first year to lower the barrier and encourage parklet participation. Staff is recommending a limit of five total to reduce parking impacts on downtown uh in San Mateo Avenue. Um, which raises another issue. How should we decide which five or approximately thirty restaurants um will receive parklets? The staff is recommending parklets to be offered on a first-come, first-served basis, tied to a complete encroachment application, so it'll be. Um, with that, I will be happy to add certain questions, and um other staff are also available as appropriate.
Okay, thank you very much uh for the report. Um, I want to be mindful of the hour too for everyone, staff as well as uh all all of us. Um, if there's members of the public, they could raise their hand now. And then if we can go to our colleagues, uh and if we can try to make it one, one trip around, that uh and if that would, that would be helpful. Thank you. Councilmember Mason?
Thank you. Um, this item and the item that just passed were really exciting to have. Um, I'm just going to go through the policy issues. So um should the city, at least for me, um just to make it um move a little faster? Yes, the city should definitely pursue a parklet program. Should the number of total, um, should the total number of parklets within downtown be limited to five? Um, yes, but with an option to increase at a later time uh depending on how the program goes. Um, should the total amount of parklets in each block be limited to two? Yes, uh offered on a first-come, first-served basis. Yes, offered on a first-come-first served basis. Yes, as long as they meet all the standards. Should the Architectural Review Committee review the parklet designs? Yes, having worked with the ARC, I think that's a great use of the Architectural Review Committee, and I think they'd be actually really helpful in this space. And then should the city provide or seek grant funds to cover parklet processing fees and/or subsidize construction costs for parklets? Yes, and I would just add one thing to the policy that I read is, I think someone mentioned earlier San Bruno's reputation around just processing times. I do think that if a business is willing to invest in a parklet, that if there's a way to place a timeframe that the city responds and, you know, inspects, I think that would really behoove both the city and the applicant just to ensure that the parklet is built as quickly as possible, and then we remove that off staff's plate and we can move on to something else. So thank you for your work on this. This looks great.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Hamilton.
So I like the way you did that, Councilmember Mason. So, but rather than go through all the bullets, I'll just say that I agree with all of, all of Councilmember Mason's answers with a couple of exceptions or clarifications. Regarding the, having the ARC review the parklet designs, I also agree that that's the appropriate body to do that. My only concern, though, there is timing because they only meet once a month. And like, would it be feasible to, you know, you know, convene the committee sooner if it would mean, you know, a business being able to get a parklet open sooner? My other question regarding the ARC is, what, what exactly would they be reviewing? So for example, when, you know, today the ARC reviews, you know, home additions and all that, and they're given blueprints and renderings and all these pictures and all these different things. I would imagine we're not going to necessarily make our businesses go out and get drawings made and all of that when they propose a parklet. So what is the vision for what exactly would go in front of the ARC to review?
I may seek the assistance of Michael Smith with our planning division.
Yeah, hi. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council. Michael Smith, planning, part of your planning department staff. Those are excellent questions. So I'll start with the ARC review and kind of what we would be wanting, wanting them to review. So there would, there would be, need to be something that is drawn for the ARC review. It wouldn't necessarily, we haven't necessarily fleshed this out, whether that is done by a licensed architect or what, but, but there would be something that would need to be drafted and as much information as possible provided, whether it be material boards, and for someone to kind of walk the ARC and staff through what their vision is for the parklet. Obviously, if we, if we go with a grant program, you know, that, that, that could actually facilitate that process to a certain degree, depending on how we structure it. And then your other question was regarding timing, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. So the ARC, you're right, does meet once a month. It does require some coordination, but, but it is my estimation that with the group meeting once per month, that it wouldn't cause a slowdown to the creation of these parklets. I, I would estimate that these would take a few months to, to make it to that process, and that it would be incumbent upon the staff who's working on it to kind of estimate when they see this project going forward. So it just takes some coordination, but it shouldn't be slowed down by the process.
Okay, great, thank you. So that actually is perfect segue to my last question, which had to do with the waiving of fees through the end of the year. Given where we are in the year and, you know, as we're in the middle of September, it takes several months to get through one of these to get, to get it out there. That, that thing had, the, the, having the deadline be December 31st kind of leapt out at me is not, it doesn't sit with everything else because it's unlikely that anybody would possibly have a parklet or even be able to propose one by then.
If I can clarify, it's actually the end of twenty-two. Oh, December twenty-two? Twenty-two.
I'm sorry, I missed, I completely misread that then. I apologize. Okay, um, I think that's, I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina, the Councilmember Salazar.
Yes, this is very exciting. I do have a couple concerns. The cost estimate for something like this with K rail, which is, which are pretty expensive to buy or rent, do we have an approximate cost for, for a parklet?
We did obtain quotes for the K rails themselves. I did ask within San Francisco, I know that's a bit of a different setup restaurant, you know, what their cost was to construct the San Francisco-style parklet, which is more using the plywood. And he said using, you know, very basic materials. It was about a parking space and a half, so a bit larger than one parking stall. And he indicated it was about $4,000. However, the most expensive portion of that cost was, he indicated the metal roof and the plexiglass. And so, you know, those are optional, and so if they wanted to reduce costs, they could. Because that's the rough framework for just wood. And then we did receive cost estimates, I can pull them up right now, from, I'll just get ready. I want to say it was in the neighborhood for the longest ones. Actually, I don't want to be incorrect on that, so I may need to get back to you on that specific cost. I want to say it was in the range of about $1,000 for the longer ones to purchase, and then you could also rent them. Of course, if you rent them for, you know, extended period of time, it could end up, you know, making more sense to purchase it outright if you're planning to have them for a long period of time. So I will need to provide you with, you know, a more exact estimate on, on what the K rail cost was. But in terms of, you know, the platform, which San Francisco does require, that could be done with plywood. That's the rough cost of, of the construction.
Thank you. So the timeline that we're thinking this would be for next year, for the spring, or is that kind of the, the idea?
I think with council direction, if it is something that wants, you know, that we want to pursue that, we would develop the application materials, and I could see that being an approximate timeframe from when we could roll that out. I mean, we'd try to do that as quickly as possible.
Sure, sure. As for, as for the outreach from the, from the restaurants that we have, has, has, have we made any contact to see, before we start limiting the number of them, you know, how many people currently are interested?
If Jennifer Dianos is available, I don't want to get the numbers wrong. She did help out graciously to contact the various businesses. Jennifer, would you mind taking that question, please?
Yeah, hi Juan, thank you. Mayor, Members of the City Council, this is Jennifer Dianos. And as part of the project team, I did outreach to not all restaurants on San Mateo Avenue, but a majority of the restaurants on San Mateo Avenue. I did not get to connect with everyone. But from those that I did connect with, there were about five or so restaurants that expressed interest. I was very clear that it was a non-committal interest, and so without having specifics, it was hard for restaurants to commit precisely. But there were about five that expressed interest. There were also about five that expressed no interest, and then several others that either were, you know, would think about it or I was unable to connect with.
Thank you for that. And just wanted to clarify that all of these parklets would be ADA compliant?
Yes.
Correct, right. Because there's been a number of, I guess restaurants have been, I guess sued for failing some compliance issues recently. All right, I'm ready to do Councilman Mason's way of answering these questions. So yes, the city should pursue a parklet program, limiting it to five, but could be expanded depending on the interest. Two, a limit of two is fine. I don't know about the first-come-first basis. How would you determine if there was two people that were right, two restaurants right next to each other, let's say Mari Mar and Grand Leader or across the street, that two other, two, maybe there could be kind of like a drawing or lottery system that people need to turn in their application by a certain time, and then can, can the parklet be shared, I guess is the question I forgot to ask. In the presentation, it showed that it was, it wasn't clear to me if they could be shared. It would reduce the cost, and sharing is caring. I think the Architecture Review Committee review. I trust staff on this one. I think, I think to expedite the process that aesthetically it'd be pretty basic, and to go to the Architecture Review Committee and do it that timeframe. And then again, like, what are they going to say? That it's not green enough, or they don't like the type of wood? I think, I think staff could, the director could, could make that call. And waiving the fees is fine. How, I'm not sure of seeking grant funds. So is that from the Community Foundation, or is that from San Mateo County? What, which grant funding are we talking about?
Uh, Councilmember Medina, to whom broken city manager, let me take that. Any number of sources, yes, we could look and make a request to the San Bruno Community Foundation. We could see if there were any countywide funds that were available. Or, or we could actually look at resources that, that we have internally and see if the city has funds that we would dedicate to the effort to provide as grants to businesses. So that was meant to be a an option that, that of course requires applications and more work, and also to see if the city has any funds it could leverage.
Hey, and, and my last question then would be for, I remember there were some, there were a couple property, or business owners that were a little upset when we, we tried closing parts of downtown to stimulate outdoor dining. The outreach that we're going to put forth to those business owners, I mean, some, some may not want them right in front of their, of their business. So is there a requirement that it has to be in front of the business, the restaurant? Did I miss that?
That would be the basic idea. We would presume that the owner would not want to construct a parklet that, you know, if it's a restaurant full-serve business, that, you know, that they'd want to go far distance to access their customers. So, you know, more than likely, the parklet adjacent to the frontage of the storefront would make the most sense. That could be something that's clarified, that only parklets that are directly adjacent to the restaurant storefront be allowed.
Unless there was no objection from the, from the other business owner that said, hey, I don't really care, but some, some maybe a little particular about parking spaces. So those, those are my questions, and thank you for the presentation.
Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when, when I started listening to this presentation, my first thought was, hey, this is a great first assignment for our newly formed downtown ad hoc committee. Let them go down there and find out all the details. It sounds like staff has done a lot of work in some initial outreach. The vice mayor brought up some, some key points that were, I was also thinking about in that not all businesses are impacted equally, and this is a loss of parking spots. And it, it would be good to have, you know, more of a definite commitment from some parties and to understand what the layout would really look like. You know, is it going to be, you know, a bunch of parklets on one block? Or, you know, are they going to be spread out? Is it going to, you know, the, the sharing thing, I, I think is interesting, you know, if multiple businesses can benefit. Because another concern I have is that if we are seeking grant funding or using public dollars to build these, and they clearly benefit one business over another, I don't know that that's necessarily an appropriate use of, of public funds. And, you know, while there may be some, you know, collateral benefit to the overall area or to the community, you know, if I'm, if I'm a business owner that didn't get a free parklet, I may not see the equity in that. And, and so I, I think there is some concern in how we, how we approach that and how we would, you know, where those funds would come from and how those would be allocated out to the community. So I, I think that there's definitely some work that needs to be done there to make sure that we're not providing an unfair benefit to, to an individual that's not available broadly to, to other businesses. So, you know, as far as everything else that was proposed, it sounds like staff has, has done most of their homework on this. And I agree that there should be some review from, from the ARC. So if, you know, if we move forward, I, I think that's an appropriate use of that body. And, you know, because there are negative impacts, I, I think there has to be a limit. I just don't know if five is, is the optimum number. That's why I was actually thinking that maybe a little more detailed, you know, analysis and, and, you know, feedback from the, from the businesses might be appropriate to actually arrive at a optimum number for that. But, you know, barring that, you know, maybe, maybe five is a good upper limit. So that, that's it for me.
Thank you. I'll try to make it very brief. I think ARC, yes, I believe parking is, is always a concern for some of the merchants, as, as we know. And not to reiterate everything Councilmember Salazar said, but the equity element of that, and about if it is being provided, is something that also I need, I feel should be looked at and make sure that that's, that's addressed as well. Let me ask the city manager or Ms. Ritchie, does that give you the guidance that you believe you need from the council?
It does, and regarding the private use for profit, fees are waived. However, if the council so does choose at a future date, you know, fees could be set on an annual basis because there is, you know, potentially when parking meters are installed, there will be a loss of some revenue. And so the city could seek to recoup those costs as well as set up other, maybe an annual inspection or some, some additional requirements. And those could be brought back at a, a future date for consideration. But I do believe I, we have enough information to, to proceed from here.
And just as a clarification, I'm less concerned with waiving the fees, which could be seen as an incentive, as I am concerned about the construction costs and who eventually ends up owning the materials and the, you know, the, the right to do something with that, with that parklet because it's, that, that is a gift of public funds.
All right, so thank you all for the discussion. Thank you, staff, for all the information. Appreciate it. Now we're going to move on to item eight, comments from council members. First, we're going to start with Councilmember Mason. Item A is stronger, stronger governance, TSPC process update discussion.
Yeah, thank you. I, I agendized this because I attended the last TSPC committee meeting, And, you know, we've, we've talked a lot about, um, what, what the stronger government governance look like at all levels within the city. And one of the areas that I realized at the TSPC and probably in other committees as well is that, um, in this case, there had been no process. Um, until recently around how to, um, request a speed bump or traffic calming measures. And I believe maybe a year, a year and a half ago, um, somebody said, well, the process is you go to public comment, you make a public comment. And then there was silence as to where that comment goes to or what happens. So staff has worked towards creating a process for a traffic calming measure request, which I think, um, I thank staff for doing that. And this process resulted in the review of a couple of streets and these, um, the residents, how, you know, all went over the 50% of what was requested to petition the city to create a traffic calming measure. There was an engineer brought out to study it and the results were with the exception of one, which was Cunningham Way. And I agree wholeheartedly, there needs to be some kind of traffic calming measures there. Um, but the other streets, um, were, were not recommended to have traffic calming measures. And so the committee respectfully, um, respectful to staff and to the process was uncomfortable doing anything more to change that recommendation or to add anything without a change in the actual process. And so the reason I'm bringing this up tonight is because, um, considering that this is a new process and considering that this has been a COVID year and that these studies were done during the COVID year when people were home. It seems that a wait for three years, which is the current process, um, is too extensive for the remaining three streets. And it may be four, I apologize if I have the number wrong. But I think that's too long to wait considering that it's very possible that those streets really do need speed bumps or traffic calming measures sooner than that. Um, there were a number of residents who called in from those communities, some of which I think have, uh, we, we have heard from at some point over the last couple of years. And so really, um, we, we may need Attorney Zefranu, I'm sorry it's so late. But I think that, that conversation I wanted to have tonight was, you know, can we ask that the process be reviewed? Can we review the process? Can we reconsider those three streets, given that there, we know for sure that schools weren't open yet when these were taken, at least our, our local schools? Um, what, what, what's the purview of the council in this case?
City Attorney.
Sure, so there's a variety of questions there and, um, not, not sure exactly which one to start with. So I, I think, um, we, starters, I think we don't want to confuse the process with the decision or with the merits of the decision. So if there's an independent reason to alter the process, that's certainly something that staff can look at and bring it back to a recommendation. Staff hasn't evaluated, you know, any of those alternatives prior to the, to the meeting and prior to tonight's comment, at least I, I haven't. Um, so we, we could certainly look at that if there's majority support by the council to, to do that. I think the substance of the decision is sort of entirely another matter and is, is not really related to the process. The substance on the merits was that there was a decision and it was based apparently on, on, you know, the opinion of a, of an engineer, consulting engineer. So, um, so I don't know that the process is really related to that, to the dissatisfaction with that decision. Except as it relates to when can the matter be brought back again, and I think that's what you were getting at.
I think that's fair. And I guess so, Chris, so currently the process is three years. And because it's new, I, I wanna say I don't, I don't really know, to be really honest, if the, if the request should be to actually change the process or to make an exception in how we could do that as a council in this regard, because we are aware that, you know, not everything was open at the time that the engineer took these, um, took this information or took this, did the study.
Yeah, and I guess I see that, um, the conference room has a hand up, but I, I just, just wanna say about that, I haven't looked at the data. For example, in all the substance of it, I don't know whether the residents made their request during COVID times. So if that were the case, then it perhaps wouldn't matter whether the, the study was done during COVID times, because presumably the two would match up. But that would be something that, you know, we, we would need to look at.
Well, I would, I would, I will just say, I know that two of the streets, those requests were made back in 2019. Um, and they were made and I brought them up at council and I was told to inform them that the process was to go back and make a public comment. Um, and then since then, this process has been created. So some of these requests have been ongoing for, before I was on the council, I'm sure. Um, but I think the benefit is now there's a, a clear process.
Uh, City Manager.
Sure, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, well, one, one comment and, and then a suggestion. So, um, I believe it was talked about at the meeting and, uh, this subject did come up in part. And, and one of the things that I, uh, that, that staff relayed to me is that while there may be a desire to redo the analysis in a year. And the assumption that, uh, the analysis may be more favorable because it will be potentially a more normal traffic year may not actually bear out. But one, one of the things that the traffic engineer said was that doing that analysis during COVID 19, when there's theoretically less traffic, may actually mean that people were going faster. And so if you redo the analysis when there's more traffic, people may actually be going slower. And so, uh, it may still be that the areas do not meet the threshold and may even be further away from the threshold when there is more traffic on the road. Uh, and so, uh, but, but again, that was the traffic engineer's assessment is that the, 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 the thought that doing it in a year, uh, will, um, will be more preferential to, to meeting the threshold and getting traffic calming measures. In their professional opinion, it would actually be, uh, be, uh, more likely be in reverse. However, should the city council want to discuss this, uh, it's worth reminding the city council that at your very last meeting, uh, the August 24th city council meeting, we had a study session on your strategic initiatives. The city council has an existing strategic initiative, initiative 24.5, which is to review the, the TSPC committee. Uh, that initiative is currently on hold because staff, uh, does not have the resources to work on that and it's pending additional, um, uh, resources. But it is anticipated to start later this fiscal year. And the update, uh, that you were provided is that, uh, that initiative would be assigned to the permanent public works director. It is, and is anticipated to start in Q3 or Q4 of, uh, this, this fiscal year. So the city council would like to discuss potentially, um, uh, changing the, this practice or policy of the, of the TSPC or potentially having the TSPC re-review these, uh, four locations next year. Uh, potentially a way to do that is through your existing strategic initiative that you will talk about later this fiscal year. Uh, and again, that's, that, that would be plenty of time to have that discussion. Uh, if you want to have, uh, those streets reevaluated in a year or in two years or wait, uh, the current, um, policy cycle of three years.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Mayor and, uh, uh, thank you, Councilwoman Mason for bringing this item up. I did, uh, listen in on that, uh, TSBC meeting. There were four streets that did not qualify. And, and the basis of that qualification is, is ba- is the 85 percentile speed. And, uh, City Manager Grogan is correct and, and, um, our consultant mentioned that it probably wouldn't be favorable to do those readings again, based on the current toolkits. The basis of that being the 85 percentile. That he also mentioned something about being able to, to modify the, the, the increment of the speed and also to provide, um, some, um, some leeway and, um, some discretion based on the width of the street and the location of the street, if it was near a school and other, other things. So, um, I think the, the TSBC did, did the right thing based on the current conditions. They said they, they couldn't support it and they went along with the recommendation, but they were interested in what you mentioned about the three-year requirement seemed a little, uh, heavy. But the way to get something changed there is to, to change the requirements on, in the toolkit. And, and it sounded like at the end of there that, that's the direction that they wanted to go. And I am in support of that. And if we need to have a discussion about that, then we do have the initiatives and, and as that comes around, we, we can address that. But the main thing that I, um, was hoping to see through that toolkit is if there's, once they obtain the data of the speeding at a certain time and they, they have that locked in, that it would be nice that if, um, if the police were available to kind of go by during that speeding time and to issue a couple of tickets. That's generally the quickest way for people to stop speeding. So thank you.
Any other, uh, comments from colleagues? Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I, I, I'm okay with waiting because that's still within the year for the initiatives. Um, and, you know, in all honesty, I don't even know that I'm opposed to the three-year wait because on a, in any regular year, it's gonna be an additional expense for some, for similar traffic, right? This year though, the reason I am advocating for this to be reviewed again is I do think it's an unconventional year. Um, it was expressed through the entire, practically the, the entire TSPC. And, um, and I think we need to give them the ability to request the review or us request the review. And if it ends up being the same, then it ends up being the same. But I think there's a lot of peace of mind that's associated with the streets that your kids run on. And, um, and we wanna make sure we rule out any, any excuse or any outlier that may otherwise, uh, in any given year not be an issue. So, um, I think that, that's it for me.
Okay, so at this time, I'm, as the manager said, there's strategic initiatives and we can address it at that time. So, uh, with all okay, then I'm gonna move on to this next item for Councilmember Mason, which is item B, local purchasing policy.
Yeah, so we, um, had a meeting about, uh, well, we talked about a strategic initiative of a local purchasing policy in the 2020, uh, strategic initiative review. And at that time, the city manager asked us to hold off, um, until we have an opportunity to listen to a presentation by the, by the staff on what's currently being done to prioritize local purchasing. And then around that time, we lost, um, Keith, uh, who was working on the project. And so I'm just trying to figure out where, where we are with it. Is, is this something that should be requested again as an initiative or will we be receiving an update at some point soon? And I know with, um, the business plan and the rack, I think one of the areas that, um, would be of interest would be seeing if we could ensure that, um, the catering list comes, if one is required and two comes from local restaurants. Um, and so as time moves on, I, I, I am curious to know where we are with, with this local purchasing process. And if we don't have a policy, we don't know if we need one because we don't know what the current process is.
Any other comments from council, but I'm gonna need to go to the City Manager and maybe that will just take care of the, um, the question that the council members posed.
Sure. Hi, Council, um, Javon Grogan, City Manager. Councilmember Mason is correct, uh, there was a request for this to be a strategic initiative that was not supported by the full city council. Uh, but staff did, uh, commit to providing the city council with, uh, information on our current purchasing practices. Uh, not our current local, uh, purchasing, uh, um, uh, tire, uh, our lo- our local purchasing preference, because we don't, don't have one. Uh, but on the current purchasing practices that the city, uh, performs. Uh, and, and that was stated, uh, under the guise of before the city council, uh, talks about potential changes to the city's purchasing practices. It would be beneficial to have some foundational information. Councilmember Mason, uh, is correct that, uh, that project was being worked on by former finance director. We went through a period of several months, um, with a interim finance director that was yours truly, the city manager dual, dual role, uh, as well as having contractors, um, provide support. We do have a new finance director that has been with the city, uh, I wanna say approximately four months. Um, I do not have, uh, a, a timing on, uh, that I can provide to the city council on when that, uh, report will be, um, to you. But I will, uh, commit to providing an, an update on the schedule. Uh, City Attorney Mark Zaffarano, I see, has popped on and has some thoughts to share on this project because, uh, uh, it does, uh, involve significant legal review as well. Uh, and so, uh, I, I think he has additional information.
Only, only one, Mark, given the late hour and I can hardly call it that. So, uh, one thing for the city council to know is that local preference, uh, uh, preferences must be supported by evidence that the cost for local businesses to operate in the community are higher than the cost for them to operate outside the community. So that's the, that's the legal requirement, that's actually under the federal constitution. So I, I think that, you know, sort of irrespective of the staff issue that Javon raised, I think it, it probably is not something that, that aspect of it is probably not something that staff can do and the staff would probably have to hire, you know, an expert, a consultant or economist to assist with that analysis to determine if there's even a basis for it. Because if there's a, a local preference like that, it does have to be supported that way. Having said that, uh, the city could certainly adopt something that isn't really a local preference that just says, we'd like to buy local whenever we can. So, uh, non, non-binding, doesn't have any teeth to it, can't really be enforced. You know, that, that would certainly be something to consider, but I think, so we have both of those in the, in the hopper, depending on the results of whether at some later date, the city council wants to allocate some funds for the consultant analysis.
Yeah, and I, and I would just say, um, that I don't, and I should have, uh, watched it right before the meeting, but I, I hadn't have a chance. I don't believe that it's that council didn't support it. I think there was substantial support in supporting our local businesses. If I remember correctly, before we went around and asked everybody, we were asked to hold off and to give staff an opportunity to share what they're already doing. And then based on what's already being done, then we can assess whether we would ask for a local purchasing policy to be created. And so that's really what I'm getting at is what, what are we doing so we can make a determination of whether we need to do more, whether we need to, you know, and then at that point determine what that would take. So, thank you.
Okay, let's go around the room once and, uh, Councilmember Hamilton.
So, um, I've talked about, by, uh, by local, um, uh, a few times, but, uh, all before joining this body. So, um, I'll just share what my thoughts are and they're more in, they're, they're, they're more in line with what, um, the city attorney, um, uh, alluded to at the end there with more of a, uh, non-binding, but it's still a policy that, that we, that we try to adhere to. And that's that in order to support our local businesses, we just make sure that businesses that are based in San Bruno are given appropriate consideration when we need to purchase goods and services. And if the San Bruno option is competitive and appropriate, you go with the San Bruno option, simple as that. So, that's, that's been my thought about this, um, for a while. And, and I agree that, you know, getting into, you know, providing all the evidence and all that kind of stuff. Um, it, it, I'm, I'm sure it's gonna get, um, way too complicated and legally murky. But if it's, if, if, you know, just, just to make sure that we're looking in, you know, at San Bruno businesses and provide a, a reasonable, uh, uh, assessment, if, 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 if the San Bruno option is appropriate, then you go for, you go for it.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Thank you. Um, I recall, um, the discussion and, and vaguely about, okay, we'll hold off on that and, and we'll, we'll come back and hear it. that and we'll, we'll come back and hear it. And understandably with, with Keith DiMartini departing and, and the, the amount of work for our city manager, so that had to take a pause. And then with this, with this latest part with our city attorney, yeah, we should, we should try our best to, to buy local when we can. And, and that is justified. And so I don't know where to go from here without getting into the legal side of it. So everybody should try to buy local. Thank you.
If I may, Mr.
Go ahead, City Attorney.
Just one, one other comment. I'm sorry. So, you know, even the, we'll just call it the soft policy of expressing that sentiment in some sort of policy ordinance actually does have its own issues that we have to consider. So for example, you know, normally the purchasing policy says if we're buying, you know, Post-its, we, we check with three vendors, perhaps including a local vendor, if there is a local vendor of Post-its, and determine what the unit price is. And, you know, we, we buy it from the least expensive vendor. So the issue is what happens if the San Bruno vendor is more expensive? And so I, I think that, that, that raises the question that we're going to have to deal with, even if the local preference that we express is not a binding preference, but perhaps puts the city council or staff in a position of either being encouraged to or being required to take an option that is more expensive than a, than a different option. So there, those are all things that we would need to consider.
And to just to go full circle, tonight, the purpose of tonight's was just asking for an update on when, you know, where we are, when we're going to get the presentation on the current practices. And then, you know, there's a number of cities that have local purchasing policies. So I, you know, I'm just curious to know where we are on that, in that realm.
City Manager?
Yeah. I would just like to request clarification from council. If so directed, is it the, would it be the direction of, of council that this is a item of high importance and should be brought to council as expeditiously as possible? And if that involves sort of balancing other workloads or strategic initiatives, that this is something of, of, of sort of high importance that has the full blessing of the city council to come back as soon as possible, knowing and recognizing that it, it, it had been a, it has been a request for quite some time, but, but staff workload has been.
City Manager had asked, what, what's the council's wish?
Can I, or is the, would the council be allowing?
I don't know if you can hear me or I'm having some technical problems?
We can, we can hear you, Mayor Medina. City Manager Grogan is speaking.
Or would the direction of the city council be to allow the city manager and the professional staff to, to balance the strategic initiatives, the, the work product that's already on the plate and provide council with a timing on when this analysis can be provided? I just want to, I just want to be clear. Sort of is it a high priority to get this sort of ASAP or, you know, and, or recognizing the, the prioritization of the existing workload items, just provide the city council with an estimated timing on when the analysis can be performed and brought back?
So I, I'm fine with the timeline if it could be presented to us so that we have an idea of when it's coming. And I do just want to be very, very clear. I'm not asking for an analysis that was never offered or requested. What's being requested is what is the city doing right now? So, thank you.
Okay. Are we all in concurrence? I see. Okay. All right. And, and Councilmember, is there anything else that you wanted to add to comments for this evening?
Oh, yeah. I just wanted to acknowledge that, that we acknowledged earlier, the Fire Prevention Week, but I also wanted to acknowledge that September 12th was Policewomen's Day, National Policewomen's Day. And considering that we have a small number of women in our police force, congratulations to them and thank you for their service. And I love what San Mateo County Sheriff's Office did is they proclaimed it a week long of, you know, thanking the, the women who serve. So just a congratulations and a thank you for, for their service because I can imagine how difficult it is being a female police officer, much less a police officer today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next item, Marty Medina, Code Enforcement for Vacant Properties.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to make this as brief as possible. So for many years, a number of vacant properties and storefronts have blighted our city. Many, many of these properties are along our major thoroughfares, along El Camino, San Bruno Avenue, and within our downtown. I have followed the process of using the San Bruno Responds app and have noticed no improvement in the most egregious properties. In fact, some of these properties are getting worse. In my discussions with the city manager, I understand code enforcement, like many departments, are short-staffed. I understand the council approved a budget. I understand life safety concerns are the top priority for code enforcement. However, something needs to be done. As a former San Bruno code enforcement officer, I know the road to compliance starts with providing notice to the property owner. Their properties are in an unacceptable, unacceptable condition, and there must be consequences for non-compliance. The compliance process is outlined in current San Bruno Municipal Code, Chapter 5.24, Maintenance of Distressed Vacant Properties. I'm asking my colleagues tonight for support to direct staff to address this problem. If staffing needs need to be increased, then a proposal can be provided to the council to amend the budget. Our, our community deserves better. We cannot allow this problem to continue. Enough is enough. Thank you.
Any comments from council?
Councilmember Hamilton?
So I absolutely and completely agree. I think that's no surprise to anyone here. Well, just as a very, very quick anecdote, several years ago, when walking downtown, I ended up stopping in front of a particular storefront that had a drooping banner and was in, in a complete state of disrepair. And, and that, and, and I saw that it also had a, a, a notice on it from the previous year, telling them to clean it up, and it hadn't been done to, to that point. And that was actually the, the moment at which I thought maybe I should run for council. This was two years ago, and that property is identical to what it looked like that, that same day. Even the, the, the sign is drooping at the exact same angle. There hasn't been a living soul in that building in two years. I completely agree that something needs to be done. I understand that we have staffing issues. If we need to bring in temporary contract work and figure out how to, how to pay for it budget-wise, we need our proposal brought before us so we can, we can get something done. I agree with the Vice Mayor that enough is enough.
Okay. Any council members, any comments from council members?
I just echo Councilmember Hamilton and Medina.
Anything else from my colleagues?
My colleagues?
Okay. So, Mr. Vice Mayor, any final thoughts?
No, I, I, I laid it out. Some of these properties are going to stay in that condition until they're given notice. And we have staffing problems that we can't, we don't have the staff to do it. So we need to bring on some temporary staff or the, the, the direction is for, for staff to come back with a solution. And if it involves bringing, providing money and amending the budget, then we do so.
Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you. So I, I don't disagree with, with anything that's been said, but I do have concerns about the process because, you know, I mean, in these, you know, Councilmember Hamilton said, you know, he, seeing these dilapidated businesses helped him in his decision to run for council. When I first ran for office, I, I walked downtown and up and down San Bruno Avenue taking pictures of, of empty storefronts that were, you know, not being kept up. And some, some of them have come back and then fallen back into disrepair. And, and, and it's absolutely because we don't have the resources to stay on top of the businesses. And sadly, the property owners aren't, you know, doing their fair share to keep, keep the properties up. But, but like I started saying, you know, my, my concern is more with the process in that, you know, we've approved a budget and we've kind of made some priorities. And, you know, there, there are appropriate times in the budget cycle where we're going to come back and revisit our priorities and decide. But I, I don't think it's a good use of staff's time if we, like, just keep throwing these things out there, reprioritizing, throwing new work orders in. I mean, we, we know we have a lot of vacancies that we need to fill. And we also know that we have no money to pay for those. And so, you know, really my concern is, is not so much that that, that these should be prioritized, but rather is this really, you know, in, in, in between these cycles, really the appropriate time to bring these up and to ask staff to halt what they're doing and then bring us back a, a reprioritization of things that are already in progress? Or would it be better to wait until we get our next update when we do get those regularly? And then say at that point, okay, look, you're not making enough progress on this. Forget about that one. Let's reprioritize and look at that. So, you know, it's, it's more of a process thing. I, I want to make sure that we're, you know, not having staff chase their tails.
City Manager?
Yeah. I'd like to ask for the police chief to be brought in the room as an analyst to offer some comments about code enforcement that is within the police department, because notices have been given to a number of businesses. But, but I think it's important to note that this is not simply a code enforcement issue or a city resource issue with having enough code enforcement officers. It is a much, much larger problem, largely more economic development than code enforcement. There is a, an existing project on the police department's work, work program to identify what additional tools in the toolbox may be needed. But, but the, the concept that it's simply a staffing issue and, and if more time was spent, that, that there would be a, a different treatment of how private property owners keep their businesses. There's actually more tools that are, that are needed in the toolbox. And with the current staffing that we have, it is important to have an understanding of the, of the workload and as well as the, the life safety issues that take precedence. So with that, I'll invite the police chief to make some comments, but absolutely we will take direction from, from council and, and move forward.
Thank you, City Manager Grogan. Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Ryan Johnson, your Chief of Police, just some brief comments on this topic. I, I think the first is that I can commit to getting an update to the city manager in relatively short order regarding the steps that are already being taken by our existing code enforcement officer with many of these properties. I think it's a little bit of a misconception to believe that nothing's being done with them. I met with him as recently as last week, and I know that he's, many of these properties are not only on his radar, but he's already been meeting with the responsible business owners and having communications with them. In addition to that, I think it's important to understand that his priorities at this point in time are that he kind of inherited a very, very large backlog of cases, as we've talked about numerous times. His first priority day to day right now is the incoming complaints. And of course, those are triaged using many of the methods that have already been discussed here, in effort to ensure that we don't create a new backlog. The old backlog, many of them are very, very old cases that can be dispositioned relatively quickly. And he doesn't want to allow a large new caseload to build up while we are down 50% of the staff in that, in that division. So he spends the bulk of his time dealing with the new incoming complaints day to day to ensure we don't create a new backlog. Then his second priority has been the backlog and trying to figure out which complaints can simply be gotten rid of because they no longer exist and which ones require some immediate attention. However, when I met with him and his supervisor last week, one of the things we discussed is that one of our aims in bringing them to the police department was to create some proactive efforts in code enforcement that's very culturally consistent with what we do at the police department. And, and we felt that was an area where we could help by bringing them under our umbrella. And I expressed my desire to ensure that that became a part of his weekly routine, even if it meant that there was some sacrifice in the previously two identified priority areas. And so in the coming weeks, we will be moving to allowing one day a week where Robert is able to really focus his time on the things that are obvious to him and to you. And San Mateo Avenue is at the very top of his list when I simply ask him, you know, where would you spend that time if you had it immediately? So there will in the immediate future be some, some more focus in the areas that have concern has been expressed tonight. And then kind of to reiterate, I know that City Manager Grogan had already asked me about how long it would take to put together an update on some of these properties so that he could share that with you all. And I'll commit to getting that done during the remainder of this week.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Hamilton?
Thank you for that update, Chief. I just want to make clear that nobody this evening implied that nothing is being done. So, I mean, the, and, and your, your description of how things are being approached now, you know, we, we know that we have a code enforcement officer, and we know that he is working, maybe inherited a massive backlog and is working very hard. It's just right now, we don't feel that that's enough. And, and your explanation for like that one building that I brought up in my anecdote, well, that makes perfect sense. If that, that one's been on the list for a long, long time, but right now we're focusing on not letting the list grow. So that, that completely explains it. So I appreciate that. But, you know, this is a quality of life issue and something that I, that I feel that we need to address. And that's why I'm so passionate in supporting this. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Councilmember Salazar?
Are, are we moving on to another topic or still on the topic of code enforcement?
Well, if we're done with code enforcement, I would go back to Councilmember Medina's people.
Okay. So I have nothing more on code enforcement.
Vice Mayor? A little hard to hear you, Mayor, but I believe the council provided direction to our city manager. And it was, it was great to hear a semi-update or an update from our, our, our chief. That's definitely appreciated. Thank you.
And Vice Mayor, is there anything else for you on council comments?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Is there Councilmember Salazar anything for you this evening?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and so I, I know it's almost midnight, so I, I will keep my comments brief. And I just wanted to throw out some, some closing thoughts based on a conversation that we had earlier, because these things have been rattling around in my head during the meeting. And so not, not for the, the sake of debate or anything, but I just wanted to throw a few little nuggets out there for, you know, food for thought. And, and, you know, regarding, you know, COVID-19, you know, I, what I keep hearing in, in the press, you know, that the World Health Organization and the CDC and infectious disease experts can't even agree on what best approaches should be. You know, we keep hearing terms like variants, you know, the, the disease keeps changing. The efficacy rates of the, of the shots that we're getting are, you know, not 100%. There's debate about whether or not we need booster shots. And then there's of course, the infamous breakthrough cases, the people that have been vaccinated and still come down with, with illness. So, you know, not even a year ago, we were hearing about 60 to 70% vaccination rate would get us to herd immunity. And here we are at 90% and people are still getting very sick. And so I, I bring up those issues because, you know, I don't think that the science is simple. And I don't think that there is an easy answer or a silver bullet. And the city manager alluded to. And the city manager um alluded to the fact that it's a changing environment, and our our staff has had to respond to those things. And um so I, you know, I I'm absolutely confident that each one of us here on the council brings 100% to this thing. And I can say emphatically that in 10 years on this council, I have never shorted on my duties knowingly. And, you know, I bring 100%, but I'm not an expert on everything. And in fact, I think one of our most important duties on the council is that we do hire people that know more than we do and have the the, you know, it's it's their full-time responsibility to be informed, to attend the briefings, and uh to make those decisions that we as as part-time lawmakers uh don't really have the time to do. Most of us have full-time jobs, we have families to raise, and so we don't have that level of of commitment that uh our professional staff does. And so, you know, the the point there being that um, you know, if members of the public think that we should know as much or more than our staff, I I have to wholeheartedly disagree with that. And I think that if we're in fact, we're not hiring people that knew more than us, then that would be the egregious dereliction of our duty. And so um we do have to put our faith in them, and if they're not doing their job, then it's our job to remove them. But I do not see any evidence that they are not doing their job. And so I just wanted to close with that, so thank you for indulging.
Thank you. Anything from you, uh councilmember Hamilton?
Yes, uh very briefly, uh just wanna remind um everyone that the um application deadline for the um San Bruno Community Foundation Board um is this coming Friday, September 17th at 5 o'clock PM. Um this is an excellent opportunity to get involved and have a voice in the community. Um the there's a brochure with all the details on the city website at sanbruno.ca.gov/sbcfboard. So um please uh please apply if you are interested. Thank you.
Thank you, and I wanna get us done before midnight, so I'm going to adjourn this meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on September the 28th, 2021, at 7 o'clock. Thank you, and good night and good morning.